In progress. The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for July 16, 2024 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March 2025. This hearing of the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conference. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Analysts are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person comments, meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who are closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive requests to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then can provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stenbridge meets the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Mr. Stenbridge.
Morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Valencia.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Better Brazza.
Morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Langham.
Morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, present.
Good morning, Mr. Aiken.
Morning, Madam Chair, present.
Thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Stenbridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We'll start off this morning with the approval of hearing minutes scheduled for 9:30. Hearing minutes are from June 13 and June 25 of this year. I'll make a motion that the approval for the minutes.
May I have a second?
Okay.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Did I miss Mr. Langham? Sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, the chair votes yes, the motion carries. Apologies.
Next, we'll go to the extensions, skip it for 9:30 a.m. As in case, we will read in all of the extensions, one behind, one behind the other. They are all slated, they've all asked for a one-year extension. If anyone has any questions after we read them then, we'll go from there. First, we have case BOA 1046127 with the address of 201 to 241 Stewart Street. Next, we have two companion cases. Case BOA 1322402 with the address of 817 to 819 Beacon Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1322, I'm sorry, case BOA 1322403 with the address of 819 Beacon Street. Then we have case BOA 1143574 with the address of 449 Cambridge Street. Next, we have case BOA 14, case BOA 1143565 with the address of 2 M. R. Then we have case BOA 1152401 with the address of 87 to 89 West Walton Park. Next, five are companion cases. Starting off, case BOA 606484 with the address of 64 to 64C Allen Dale Street. With that, we have case BOA 606486 with the address of 66 to 66 Allen Dale Street. 66 for 66 Allen Dale Street. Then we have case BOA 606489 with the address of 72 to 72B Allen Dale Street. The last four are case BOA 1305862 with the address of 200 Temple Street. Then we have case BOA 1184776 with the address of 879 to 881 Blue Hill Avenue. Next, we have case BOA 1050100 with the address of 680 Massachusetts Avenue. And the final extension request is for case BOA 1511632 with the address of 141 Addison Street. And those are the extensions for this morning.
Okay.
Madam Chair, before, Attorney Richards, I'm sorry to interrupt. Before there's a vote, I just clarify for the record that 141 Addison Street request is not an extension of the decision. It's actually an extension of the filing of the decision with ISD. So I just want to make sure that's clear for the record. I have the board does have a letter from us regarding that and I believe the board has the authority to extend the time for filing for good cause under the enabling legislation. Just want to make that clear for the record. Thank you.
Understood, Attorney Linds. And is there a motion to grant the extensions as requested?
I make a motion to grant the extensions as requested.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge. Mr. Stenbridge. Okay, I'm going to keep going. We might have lost them. Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Uh, the chair votes yes, the motion carries. Okay, let's, let's pause and see what's happened to them, to our secretary. I don't know, Jessica, are you with them? Can you find out?
I'm not with them, no, I'm in a different room.
Okay. Okay, sorry, we seem to have some technical difficulties. Okay, as, as suspected, there's some technical difficulty and they are trying to reboot, so let's pause for a moment.
I have a quick question.
Recording stopped. I'm sorry, who's, who's asking the question?
That was me. Um, other than what was, um,
Who, who are you and who are you presenting on?
Sorry, my name is Raymond. I'm presenting on 900 Beacon for, I guess, getting an outdoor space.
Okay.
And zoning, like just basically zoning for that. And I still hear it being listed out before, so I was wondering if I'm still on the agenda or something. Is there more to the agenda than what was just listed?
Yeah, those were just extensions. So once we finish those, we're going to move on to the next items on the agenda. So I see your case on the 9:30 hearing conference, so.
Great, great. I just want to double check. Thank you so much.
Right, thank you. Mr. Secretary, are you back?
We're almost back, Madam Chair.
Okay, you're almost back. All right, I see you now. Good, so you're on video too.
Okay. Okay, I believe we will next go to the board of final arbiter hearings, scheduled for 9:30 a.m.
Yes.
First, the first F, we are two companion cases. Case BOA 1576380 with the address of 268 Geneva Avenue. Along with that, we have case BOA 1576381 with the address of 276.
Recording in progress.
Geneva Avenue.
So Ms. Better Brazza is retreating herself, so we will be a six-member board.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Eckle with Fletcher Tilton on behalf of the applicant. We are here this morning seeking the board's approval for our board final arbiter requests relating to the previously approved projects at 268 and 276 Geneva Ave. By way of brief background, these two applications were originally filed in conjunction with the mayor's office of housing and approved by the board to erect two seven-unit residential buildings, one at 268 and one at 276 Geneva Ave in Dorchester. These were originally heard and approved by the board back on May 7 of this year. As plans have advanced, it's become determined that a slight alteration to the building footprint in both cases and a small increase in square footage is necessary to accommodate the required transformers and to ensure we meet the mayor's office of housing typical standards regarding the size of bedrooms. Therefore, we're proposing to shift the buildings, again in both cases, back a few feet, which will result in a slightly larger front yard setback and a slightly smaller rear yard setback. Specifically, at 268 Geneva, our front setback will increase from about 4.1, uh, 4.81 feet to 5.9 feet and the rear setback will decrease from 9.8 feet to 6.13 feet. And the side setbacks are proposed to be approximately 5.5 feet. The FAR at 268 Geneva is slightly increasing from 1.96 to 2.01 and that's again to support the increase in bedroom sizes. At 276 Geneva Ave, we're proposing a front yard increase from 3.9 to 6 feet and a rear yard decrease from about 12 and a half feet to 10.3 feet with side setbacks of approximately 5.9 and 5 feet. The FAR in this case will be going slightly up from 1.94 to 2.07. Relief was previously granted for the rear and side yard setbacks as well as floor area ratio by the board and this proposal should not trigger any new violations. So with that, I'll pause and answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Thank you.
Next, we have the building code case. That would be case BOA 1602747 with the address of 123 to 125 Broad Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linds on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, we're actually requesting to dismiss without prejudice for this matter. We did receive relief from the BBRS on these same topics, so we do not need to proceed before the board.
Okay, sounds good. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to dismiss without prejudice.
May I have a second? You're on. Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have the groundwater G-COD, groundwater conservation overlay district and building code case. That is case BOA 1585436 with the address of 207 West Newton Street. And actually, there are two that's pending case along with that, which is case BOA 1585441 also with the address of 276.
Recording in progress.
Geneva Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain to the board?
So Ms. Better Brazza is retreating herself, so we will be a six-member board.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Eckle with Fletcher Tilton on behalf of the applicant. We are here this morning seeking the board's approval for our board final arbiter requests relating to the previously approved projects at 268 and 276 Geneva Ave. By way of brief background, these two applications were originally filed in conjunction with the mayor's office of housing and approved by the board to erect two seven-unit residential buildings, one at 268 and one at 276 Geneva Ave in Dorchester. These were originally heard and approved by the board back on May 7 of this year. As plans have advanced, it's become determined that a slight alteration to the building footprint in both cases and a small increase in square footage is necessary to accommodate the required transformers and to ensure we meet the mayor's office of housing typical standards regarding the size of bedrooms. Therefore, we're proposing to shift the buildings, again in both cases, back a few feet, which will result in a slightly larger front yard setback and a slightly smaller rear yard setback. Specifically, at 268 Geneva, our front setback will increase from about 4.1, uh, 4.81 feet to 5.9 feet and the rear setback will decrease from 9.8 feet to 6.13 feet. And the side setbacks are proposed to be approximately 5.5 feet. The FAR at 268 Geneva is slightly increasing from 1.96 to 2.01 and that's again to support the increase in bedroom sizes. At 276 Geneva Ave, we're proposing a front yard increase from 3.9 to 6 feet and a rear yard decrease from about 12 and a half feet to 10.3 feet with side setbacks of approximately 5.9 and 5 feet. The FAR in this case will be going slightly up from 1.94 to 2.07. Relief was previously granted for the rear and side yard setbacks as well as floor area ratio by the board and this proposal should not trigger any new violations. So with that, I'll pause and answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have the building code case. That would be case BOA 1602747 with the address of 123 to 125 Broad Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Linds on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, we're actually requesting to dismiss without prejudice for this matter. We did receive relief from the BBRS on these same topics, so we do not need to proceed before the board.
Okay, sounds good. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to dismiss without prejudice.
May I have a second? You're on. Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have the groundwater G-COD, groundwater conservation overlay district and building code case. That is case BOA 1585436 with the address of 207 West Newton Street. And actually, there are two that's pending case along with that, which is case BOA 1585441 also with the address of 207 West Newton Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, good morning once again, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Attorney Matt Eckle with Fletcher Tilton on behalf of the applicant. We're here this morning before you seeking relief for both G-COD as well as building code. We're seeking to renovate the existing structure at 207 West Newton Street and erect a roof deck for exclusive use of unit five. The roof deck is proposed to be accessed by internal stairs as well as a hatch. The zoning sub-district is a multifamily residential and the existing conditions is five residential units and that use will remain, the lot size is approximately 2,200 square feet. Currently, as constituted, each floor contains one residential unit. Again, this is all staying the same, one unit per floor. We are proposing some internal renovations as well as some exterior updates and that roof deck which was previously mentioned. The deck will be accessed directly from unit five by internal stairs and a hatch and the decks have potentially been set back from the street to limit any impacts on the butters or the streetscape. We're seeking relief for the cited G-COD violation due to the total cost of the renovation this triggered and as well as a building code violation which was cited due to the fact that access to the roof is proposed to be through that hatch as opposed to a headhouse. Now, the project's otherwise zoning compliant, including the deck. It's just the building code relief we need for the hatch. As typical with roof decks, the board sees we're proposing this hatch to limit any impact or change the profile of the building and limit the impacts on the neighborhood. We did previously meet with the South End Landmarks District Commission staff on site to ensure that the roof deck itself would not be visible from a public way and we will continue to go through design review with them for some of the cosmetic updates and upgrades to the building. With that, I'll pause and happily take any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Mr. Semenely on?
Yes, Madam Chair, good morning. Christian Semenely, Boston Brown Water Trust, and we have both G-COD letters from the applicant.
Good morning and thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to perform a motion of approval for G-COD and also a motion to approve the voting for relief for the proposed roof hatch.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board.
Next, we'll move through the hearing scheduled for 9:30 a.m. First, we have this case BOA 1579638 with the address of 172 Leighton Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain?
You can unmute yourself if you want for that. Is this Sarah Grant?
Yes, I'm not sure if my computer audio is working. Can you?
You can hear me.
I can hear you. Oh, sorry.
We can hear you, Sarah.
I think I can. No, I'm muted. Hang on, I'm going to join by phone. So sorry.
We can hear you, Ms. Grant. Are you unable to hear us?
Your meeting ID followed by town. Enter your participant ID followed by town. Otherwise, press town to continue. You have joined a meeting as an attendee.
Okay, Ms. Grant, are you with us? So we can't hear you. We, we were actually able to hear you when you were unmuted on your computer. If you unmute yourself on your computer, we, we can hear you and hopefully you can hear us by phone.
I think, um, I think, um, we can hear you now. There's my, coming through on my phone.
Okay, well, we, we can hear you, so if you want to proceed.
Okay. I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay.
So you, you're not able to share your screen. You have to follow whatever presentation you submitted. So you can prompt Madam Ambassador to shift slides.
Okay, then I suppose I'll just have to do this verbally. I was told I would be able to share my screen.
No, you, you are not.
So, in summary, my husband and I are the homeowners at 172 Leighton Street in East Boston. We, um, our proposal, I'm sorry, I can't. I'm hearing myself on the phone. I'm sorry, can, may, may I go later? I need to figure this out.
Carolyn, is that okay to defer her till later?
I think you should be able to defer her.
Okay, do, do we need, do we need to vote to defer her till later
or can we just circle back?
We can just circle back. I think that's fine.
Okay, Mr. Secretary, can you also see if there are any deferrals for 9:30?
Um, with that, as Madam Chair has advised us, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawal or deferral in the 9:30, in the scheduled 9:30 hearing. Hearing none, then we'll, we'll go on to case BOA 1587722 with the address of 40 Auburn Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain to the board?
Sure, my name is Tim Sheehan. I'm at Nine Wall Street in Charleston. I'm the architect. And what we're trying to do here is currently this single-family house has this very small shed at the end of the driveway on the right side rear of the building. Uh, it opens up into the existing kitchen. What we'd like to do is create 105 square foot mudroom, one-story mudroom. Uh, currently existing on top of this shed, there's a small deck. We'd like to make that deck just a slight bit bigger. We have a side setback violation because we're up against, you know, we'll continue, we'll continue that non-conformity against the existing house to the right. We'll have a rear setback because we're at the rear of the property and there's a roof, restricted roof because we're changing a roof. They also have a height violation on there, which is wrong because the thing's only going to be about 12 feet high. But that notwithstanding, we need the relief to create some more habitable area for the family. Um, with that, I leave it to question. We've had a, a, a neighborhood process which was, I don't think, attended by anybody except for us. So having said that, we'd like to, we'd like to move forward if possible.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This applicant has completed ONS community process. Our office held in a butters meeting on the Our office held in a butters meeting on the 15th of May which had two attendees and which questions were posed, but no opposition was raised. At this time, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Okay, and Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, perform a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you, everybody.
Next, we have case 1575519 with the address of 40 North Square. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please respond to the board?
Thank you, Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is Brent McDonald. I'm an attorney at Nutter McLennan &amp; Fish with offices at 155 Seaport Boulevard in Boston. With me here today is my colleague, Ali Brophy from Nutter, as well as Ruben Maciel and Phoebe McGee and Lila Hadad from Mama Maria. We represent Busseletti LLC doing business as Mama Maria, which operates a longstanding restaurant at 3 North Square in the North End. Mama Maria is one of the few female-owned fine dining restaurants in Boston. 3 North Square, which was constructed in the late 1800s, contains three floors plus a basement. Currently, there's kitchen and storage in the basement area, kitchen and a dining area on the first floor, a dining area on the second floor. If you could stay with that prior slide. And the third floor is currently used for administrative offices and storage. The layout of this building, if you're not familiar with it, operates more like a single-family house than a restaurant. It's located right on North Square. It's currently authorized by Inspection Services and Boston Fire for the occupancy of 95 persons. It also holds a liquor license, all alcohol liquor license from the Boston Licensing Board that covers all three floors as well as the basement and again allows for the seating for combined 95 persons on the first and second floor. If you go to the next slide, please. The property is within the multifamily residential subdistrict in the North End Neighborhood District. It is adjacent to the Hanover Community Commercial Subdistrict and there are several restaurants across the street in North Square. Restaurant uses have been present at this property since at least 1974 according to ISD records and likely longer. And the McGee family has owned and operated this restaurant since 1988 in its current configuration. Restaurant uses are nonconforming use in this district. If you go to the next slide, please. We were here today seeking approval from the board to create an amenity on the third floor in the form of a waiting area for patrons. It would have a bar and seating. And we'll show the floor plans in a minute. Would have seating for 15 on that third floor. We're doing this because there isn't really a great area for patrons to wait. If you're familiar with the restaurant, you can, you would see how tight it is in the existing layout for excess people to just be milling about. And those excess people are really people who arrived early for a reservation and their table's not ready. We want to create, since this is a fine dining atmosphere, a great place for people to hang out until their table is ready. Waiting outside obviously doesn't work so well in inclement weather or sending, what we do sometimes now is send people to other locations in the North End, other bars, excuse me, other bars where they could spend 15 or 20 minutes before they come back. And we're trying to create a great experience for each of our customers. So we would be reconfiguring the restaurant to create this space out of the administrative offices on the third floor into a 15-seat waiting area with bar. We would also be eliminating 11 seats elsewhere on the first and second floor of the restaurant to create a net increase of only four seats. If you go to the next slide, please. So you can see here, this is floor plans of the first and second floor. The only thing that would be happening on the first and second floor would be again that reduction of 11 seats as well as you can see here on the first floor, there's insulation of a proposed service bar. That is intended to be an amenity for the servers to help turn tables quicker so that they don't have to go up to a second or third floor to get drinks. That would not be a bar that's serving any patrons directly. Those would just be servers accessing various items to serve patrons. If you go to the next slide. So this one is showing the third floor, which is why we're here. As you can see on this slide, the area highlighted in orange is where the work would be done and that would be converting that back office administrative space into a proposed bar with five seats added as well as 10 seats at tables. Now, this again is going to be an amenity. There would be no dinner service available on the third floor. This again is just a place for people to have a drink. There could be some light appetizers that don't require any cooking such as, you know, sort of meat platters or cheese or things of that nature. But again, this would not be a full dining experience. There would be a restroom constructed as part of this for people who are up there. And as you can see, there's storage, liquor storage, and a staff room which are all existing on that level. Let's go to the next slide, please. We are here today because we require relief in the form of an expansion of a nonconforming use in a variance. It is discussed that there's an only increase of four patrons in the restaurant, but we feel that this would be a more efficient use of the building and provide a better experience for patrons who are again arriving early for reservations. This is in harmony with adjacent land uses in North Square and the North End. Mama Maria has existed harmoniously with its neighbors for more than 35 years and has been using that third floor for restaurant uses, albeit back office uses. During that time period, there really aren't any other options to create a viable waiting room, a waiting area to serve patrons given the layout of the structure. And again, we don't anticipate any impacts to the neighborhood and in fact, a benefit by reducing waiting customers outside. In addition, I did want to note that the BPDAD did recommend approval and they also noted in their recommendation that these changes will help support the goals of Imagine Boston 2030. As small businesses are a key part of Boston's economy and should be given a place to grow and the expansion would help support Boston's economy while it continues to be a major character in drawing people to the North End. If you go to the next slide, please. We did go through a community process. We reached out to Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services and distributed flyers to all properties within a 300-foot radius. We met with the North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council, which unanimously supported this proposal. We also met with the North End Waterfront Residents Association, their zoning and license committee, and then went to full membership, which had a split vote of eight for the proposal and 10 against. We also did direct outreach to neighbors and I understand the board's received more than 25 letters of support from various residents of the North End and waterfront. Let me pause there. I am available as well as Ruben and Phoebe to answer any questions that the board or the community may have.
Any questions from the board? Hearing done, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Chris Green from the Office of Neighborhood Services. We are deferring to the board. The applicant is correct. They have completed our community process. We had the flyer within the 300-foot radius and we did have them attend the two civics, Munich and Ura, which we did receive that one letter of opposition. And thank you again, we defer to the board.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Our president, Colores, offense. The council would like to go and support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this project.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you all.
Next, we have two companion cases. First is case BOA 1565102 with the address of 8 Greenville Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1565094 with the address of 8R Greenville Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please respond to the board?
Thank you very much. Good morning, Madam Chair and respectful members of the zoning board. My name is Ahmed Nur. I am the owner of 8 Greenville as of 2014 and 8 Greenville R. I do apologize, I had an architect who was with us just a few minutes ago and unfortunately, the priority for him is his job, so he had to leave for an hour, hoping to do it after 11 o'clock. He's busy 10 to 11, but I'll do my best to present the case. I'm here to respectfully request forgiveness for the violations. I'll start with 8 Greenville first of. The plan examiner IST had wrote down two violations there. One was the maneuvering over, coming in, if you could zoom in from the driveway, coming in from 8 Greenville. And you will see if you go towards, yep, if you go towards that, those lines. Currently, I have an existing garage there and I have four garages there and I have no issues in maneuvering over. And when I asked Frank, why is there a violation? He said he'd be going over 8 Greenville land. In other words, there is no issue or shortage of land. It's just that they're two different parcels and so I have to do an easement. For, as I own both properties now, I have to make it illegal for them to go in. So it's, that's the reason why he said that there is an issue with the maneuvering over because you'd be going into 8 Greenville property to get to 8R. And so I intend to combine, not combine the parcels, but at least to have an easement and a right to get into the garages. The second was, let's see, the second violation that he said was also open land. I have currently existing 90 feet from the back of 8 Greenville to the beginning of the garage where it is now, where the proposed is. 90 feet by 55 feet, about 5,000 square feet open space. So I don't think that that would be insufficient once I do that easement. I can stop there or I can continue to the next property, which is the 8R violations. Let me know, Madam Chair, if you want me to...
Well, I think it would be helpful to understand both because I'm trying to understand where the housing is versus where those four parking spaces are.
Absolutely. I could do that. I wish I could point. If you could see the house of 8 Greenville, if you back up to the... Where's the green room? Yep, can you zoom in, please? Right in there? Okay. Right there. So the existing property of 8 Greenville ends right where those stairs are, those back porch stairs. And the opening area, it starts from there. If you look at those rectangular spots, 1, 2, 3, 4, those are current parking spots. And then if you now move up, please, move up the drawings. No, the other way. Thank you. And zoom in. Keep going, keep up. Okay, good. And the proposed three units are there. So 1, 2, 3, the three row houses. The first floor is the garage is where those, where all the lines are going in. So you drive into your, each unit would drive into their garage and then they'll go up. I don't know if you have the drawings on the first floor. They'll go up to the first floor and you'll see the kitchen and the bathroom, kitchen and the dining room. And then you'll go up to two bedrooms and then you'll go up to the master bedroom and then up on the roof, on top of those garages that you're looking at. So that's the area that I'm proposing. And everything in between from that proposal and back up the other way to 8 Greenville is wide open space.
So you're talking about the space that's outside of the yellow or the very bottom of the yellow?
The space that outside of, the space that's inside the yellow is the proposed space once you approve the units. In other words, the new building that I'm going to be building, the three row houses, one-family houses, they have their own garages underneath. The area, the four rectangular spots that are within the yellow will be used for the existing 8 Greenville parking spaces.
Okay, questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Nur. So if I understand correctly, there will be three garages under the new building and over those three parking spaces. How many overparking spaces are you proposing in total for the whole property?
I have in total, so there will be a total of seven. Four existing outside and three new ones that would be going in underneath the new building. So in total, I believe we have...
Is there another slide you can direct us to so that we can see what it looks like? What you're proposing? Yeah.
In terms of the, in terms of the parking spaces, you mean?
Terms of the design, or is that the next set of slides?
Oh, yeah, just keep going.
Okay.
I've sent some pictures.
Yeah.
I have some, actually photos of the existing properties. I don't know if you're able to upload those via email just to give you an idea of the grass and the landscape and the existing building. All that photos I've sent over through Stephanie.
Okay, we'll get this 8R out on, Madam Ambassador?
Yeah, this is a Boston Water sewer. Yeah, here's a proposed of the facade. Yeah, yeah, that's a good one right there. Go to the top one. I mean, yeah, if you can zoom into the top. So those are the three units right there and underneath are the parking spaces. You drive in there and you go up and it'll be the kitchen and the dining room. You go up and there'll be two bedrooms. And then you go up, there'll be the one master bedroom up there. And also, this is a multifamily district in which allows me to do four units. I'm only proposing three here because of the tightness of the space.
What's your backyard setback? How close are you to your...
I'm right on, I'm right on it. I'm maybe three feet off the edge. But there is a big parking lot right behind me for, I think I want to say... What's the address there? On Mount Pleasant, there's like a nursery place, a business place. So there's a giant parking lot right behind me and there's a dumpster. And then on the left-hand side is a Bardav, which is another big parking lot that belongs to 225 Dudley Street. And so on both neighbors. And then the neighbor on my left, Alice, a good friend of mine, and we helped one another. This area, I just wanted to give you a background also. And to my right is Ruben, and we're very tight, so I have two butters. All my butters have helped me and wrote letters towards the project. When I bought the project, it was a house that was, had a lot of suicidal, a lot of drug use, a lot of gangs. And so I've gone through quite a bit in hardship in trying to bring it up into a vibrant. So I was a tenure at a city planning board myself and so, and I enjoy people and neighbors and so we really enjoyed it together. And now everything's done and everything's gentified. And currently, I'm dealing with this open land where it's a cut through from Bardav, from Mount Pleasant and Bardav. Kids are jumping over the fence, sometimes running away from the police with stolen bicycles.
Are there questions from the board, other questions from the board?
Thank you so much.
Is Jeff Hampton on? From the planning department? Is Jeff Hampton on?
Um, you're Ms. Bede Brazza. I thought you might want to chat.
Yes, we'd love to hear from you on this.
Wouldn't this be considered kind of a lot behind, an additional unit behind a lot?
If it is on a separate lot, like the opponent has said, it would be, you know, we would need or we would request that an easement be filed because as the board is aware, you know, the zoning relief goes with the property and not with the owner per se. So if this property were to be sold future, you know, at a future time and no easement has been recorded, then the new owner doesn't have access to the rear of the site. This is one of those odd cases that comes up every once in a while where the planning department is actually in favor of the townhomes behind it. But we are opposed to the four parking spaces that is being created just because of maneuverability and the lack of open space. So the city's planning department would like to go on the record for supporting 8R for the townhomes, but in opposition of the four parking spaces because of the maneuverability in the open space that it's taking away.
Right, right. So basically, I'm looking at the zoning viewer and I do see that it is a separate lot. So you're correct in that it's considered a lot of its own, but they do need to put an easement to be able to access that very lot because it's landlocked right now.
Correct, and I'd like to...
Do you have that easement in place or...
I do. We started to... I do, we started to, I wish the architect was here. And I wanted to be done without, before coming to your face over and say, we're going to be doing, you know, an easement afterwards. But if you, if the board is, I've been struggling with this between water and sewer and also, you know, about two years now, I've put in quite a bit of money in it. If, if the board is kind enough to approve it and then put a condition saying do the easement, I'll be more than happy to get that easement going.
Yeah, the only other issue is fire department review to be able to get a fire truck behind.
Yeah. We, we did that with the Boston Water Sewer. So there's two lots, I've sent them another pictures. There's the two giant lots, there's a fire hydrant that's about a hundred feet away on Dudley, on Bard Avenue.
How wide, how wide is the aisle, the driveway?
That's, that's about fifty, well, my, my driveway...
About wide is it?
It's fifty feet, fifty feet wide. It's giant. Like two, two or three cars can go by on Bard Avenue as well as on Mount Pleasant, right behind me. It is the easiest access for, for emergency vehicles. So Boston Water Sewer came in and did a test on the fire hydrant and that's, their concern was fire engines and also emergency. And so that's been approved and I'll be happy to provide that again. I have that actually, I wish I could share my documents with you.
It's not very clear on the surveyor, the width of the driving, the drive by.
The, the width, the width of eight Greenville driveway is eleven feet, eight inches.
Isn't that where you would need to access to...
We, we can access that.
The fire, the fire trucks need to access that aisle.
They, they can access that and they require a, they require more than fifteen feet. However, I'm saying that...
I thought it was twenty feet, but Jeff Hampton could correct me.
It, it is twenty feet, it's eleven feet, eleven feet, I'm sorry. It's, it's four inches shy of twenty feet. But on the backside of the proposed property is a giant parking lot that's open to Mount Pleasant. And also to the left hand side is a giant parking lot that's open to Dudley, Dudley Street with a fire hydrant. So even if they were not able to access my driveway, which they are, it's legal, cars go by and I have plenty of three feet on each side on the cargo spot. And so I thought it was the most accessible property in terms of fire.
Okay, I don't have any further questions, thank you.
Madam Chair, for the record, for the record, the Boston Transportation Department is recommending removing one parking space and that the parking should be at sixty degree angle. So you were going to mention that the transportation department, their only concern is allowing the open space and manu, 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 ay, carajo, manu.
No worries, you're talking about removing a space from the, from eight Greenville, is that right?
Yes, from the four, four parking spaces that he has, removing one to improve.
Got it, thank you.
And just last, I'm so sorry, I just want to share with you, the students...
Please be quick, we have other...
Okay, no, there is students that are occupying and they all have bicycles. No one really has a car. I have four garages available for them to park now, none of them will want to.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Quickly, please.
Can you tell me what the bare ground under construction note is? It's grayed out on the existing conditions plan where I think the parking is proposed?
It's just going to be gray, ungrayed, we're not digging anything. We're going to probably remove any, any unsuitable soil and, and to bring it up. So it'll be the same elevation as eight Greenville. They're going to be drive up, so there's, we're not digging anything down.
Okay, so that means it just says some under construction, but there's no construction going on back there?
Nothing.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
With that, let's open it up to public testimony.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Chris Green, Office of Neighborhood Services. We are deferring to the board. The applicant has completed our community process. Our office held in a butters meeting on March twenty-third and the applicant has met local civics on three occasions in addition to an in-person sidewalk. We received thirteen letters from a media of butters in support. We did receive a mix of opinions from the local civics with concerns centering around rodent issues and emergency vehicular access. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other elected official offices? No, hearing none, I have no additional ways to answer.
I never.
Thank you.
I'm speaking on behalf of the council, my name is Angie, I'm speaking on behalf of Council Anderson regarding eight and eight R Greenville Street. The council writes to request that the appeal for eight and eight R Greenville Street be deferred to allow for greater community feedback. Council received word from several community members that the presentation of eight and eight R Greenville Street at the local civic association was difficult to participate in. All attempts were made to reschedule the meeting in advance of today's zoning board of appeals meeting. The community has still not had its chance to offer feedback on this proposal in the way that they would like. The council calmly requests that this matter be deferred to a future ZBA meeting to ensure that the community is able to voice their support or concerns behind this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion of approval without prejudice. We've heard that in some cases, our community process has gone, I think it needs to be followed up on. Still have questions regarding the width of the driveway, making it a, an entrance to another property. So with that, I'll make a motion for approval without prejudice.
For deferment, okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Betterara's?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Your votes, yes, the motion carries. Is there a date, is there a date from, I don't know if it's Samantha or Carolyn?
Yeah, so we could do August thirteenth, August twenty-seventh, September tenth, and also going in October as well.
Well, given it's the summer and we're talking about community engagement, I would suggest the fall to provide ample time for that.
Sure. So there's September tenth, September twenty-fourth, October eighth, and October twenty-ninth.
So applicant, can the applicant give a sense of when you think you can go back to the civic groups and pick a date accordingly?
Please, September tenth, the earliest, the better. I've gone to three, three meetings before.
With that, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Sorry, 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 we already did that, sorry. We'll see you September tenth, next case. Sorry so much.
No worries, thank you for your time.
Next, we have case BOA one five six one zero nine eight. The address is twenty-three Gayhead Street. If the applicant and/or their representative present, would they please explain the case report?
Hi, yes, I'm Tobias Johnson, owner of twenty-three Gayhead Street. I bought the property in nineteen ninety-eight and thank you for your time on this matter today. I'm here requesting a change of use from a single family to a two-family. My plan is a full twenty-first century modernization and rehab of the property with a small addition, which amounts to about slightly under five hundred square feet. You'll note here the picture of the existing on the left and the architectural rendering on the right. Next slide. My, my architect has worked with other Queen Anne Victorians on the street. I think it's notable that this area is the Sunnyside neighborhood of Jamaica Plain, which has been nominated for historic preservation and architectural neighborhood designation. It is not yet part of that listing, however, we could be part of that listing if we chose to continue to pursue that. Next slide. This is a summary of the highlights of the project. Really, I want to create a one, two-bedroom and a one, three-bedroom. The three-bedroom will occupy the middle and upper floor. The property has solar panels. I plan to add electric car charging and restore the Queen Anne Victorian detail, also proper bike and trash storage. And we need exterior steps for a second means of egress. I have, I have one immediate butter, so, and I've done the breakout there of the additional square footage being added, we're well within the FAR for the site. Next slide. These are just some pictures sort of of the existing conditions. Next slide. As I say, I have one immediate butter on twenty, at twenty-one Gayhead. The street is a corner rounded lot, so it's a little bit unusual. Next slide. Here's a picture of the actual lot itself, it's rounded. There, there is currently parking with a curb cut in the rear and existing solar panels. And you can, and this little bump out on the backside of the property, that will be removed and the addition will be placed there. And the addition is about three times the size of the existing mudroom there, which also provides access to the basement. Next slide. And here is the existing next to the proposed with the steps on the side. Next slide. Here's a first floor plan detail. And there is room to accommodate two cars in the rear and I know that was flagged for zoning also. I think that's a non-conforming setback. However, currently, we really only need one car. There are four tenants at this building, it's rental, two have cars, two do not. So car ownership is on the wane, so, next slide. This is the proposed basement with some, basically storage with HVAC. We are moving the basement steps from the rear of the property to the front of the property to make it continuous staircase from the third floor to the basement. Next slide. Proposed first floor plan and these plans are all within the permitted setbacks and don't trigger any zoning violations, only really if I'm seeking today is just a use from a single family to a two-family.
Mr. Johnson? Mr. Johnson? May I pause you right there just to see if folks have questions? Are there any questions from the board?
In terms of the access to the basement, is there just, the access to the basement is from the inside and there's nothing? There's no entrance or egress from the outside?
Currently, as planned, yes, you'll hear, you'll see here in this, this is a good slide to start, the common entry there off of the porch and, and then the new basement stairs, currently it's only on the inside, yes, interior access to the basement.
And it will remain that way?
Yes, yes, there was some discussion to add a bulkhead on the exterior, currently there's no plan for that.
There.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'm going to pause you here and ask for public testimony.
Madam Chair of the board?
Okay, thank you.
Sorry. Madam Chairman of the board and board members, for the record, my name is Jared Bembry, I am the Jamaica Plain Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abudders meeting facilitated by myself in a civic meeting with JPNC. We have received one letter of support addressing the housing crisis and one letter of opposition with the opposition against vehicles in the neighborhood and parking. Our concerns were also voiced during the abudders meeting in regard to loss of green space and blocking sightlines, while others did voice support. They then went on to present to the civic, during the civic meeting, the organization did take a vote on the project, the project was approved. Thank you for your time and the mayor's office of neighborhood services would like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have no additional ways to answer. Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Betterara's?
Yes.
Ms. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes, yes, the motion carries, fill up.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have case BOA one five eight five seven eight three with the address of twenty-one Beethoven Street. If the applicant and/or their representative present, would they please explain to the board?
Hi, if you're on, can you raise your hand on yourself if you're on for this proposal? Oh, I just saw it written, can you raise your hand again if you're on for this proposal? Okay, second. I see two names, Rick and Glenn, are either of you here to speak on this proposal?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning.
Go ahead.
I, I don't know how to turn.
So you guys lagged up and we control the slides, but you can briefly let us know what you're looking to do.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Rick Ames, Next Face Studios Architects. With me is Galen Nelson, the homeowner. This will be a pretty brief presentation. It's an existing one fam, two-family Victorian on Beethoven Street that the owners have owned for quite a while and raised five children in. And the front porch in exterior needs quite a bit of repair and both front and side porch are non-conforming. And in the process of taking them down and rebuilding them, we need relief for front yard and side yard setback. If you could go to the next slide, please. There's really very little change. You know, this is the existing condition that we, you just saw above was the proposed, this is the existing, the location of doors and porches and stairs really have altered very little. It's just that they are currently all non-conforming. They are enlarging the main porch by two feet, as I said, to make it, you know, porch ready for concerts, porch press ready. If you could go to the next slide. You could really go to the next slide. It, it really is very... So these are the two proportions that are being proposed. I don't, the side porch goes into a very small, single, little one-bedroom unit. The upstairs beats the rest of the house. The family is currently using all of it, but is retaining the two family and the two entries. Next slide, please. Side elevation of the porch they're proposing. Next slide, please. Front elevation of the porch that they're providing, that there's the side porch on the right, there's the front porch on the left. Next slide, please. I guess that's it. I mean, I believe there are existing photos that were submitted, but, and if we can share screens, I could show them. But I think that's enough information and basically it's, it's a front yard, side yard obligation, you know, violation and...
Great, thank you.
I just want, Galen, do you have anything you would like to add, homeowner?
No, I, no, thank you, Rick. I think you've explained it very well. A very, very modest change to the existing structure and really a need to simply rebuild them because they're pretty badly deteriorated.
How, how long have you guys lived there, Galen?
Since two thousand and three.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chairman of the board and board members, for the record, my name is Jared Bembry, I am the Community Engagement Specialist for the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abudders meeting facilitated by myself in a civic meeting with JPNC. We have received one letter of support and no letters of opposition. I know opposition or concerns were raised during the abudders meeting. We have also received support and approval from the civic organization. Thank you for your time and the mayor's office of neighborhood services would like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have no additional ways to answer. With that, may I have a motion?
Correct, I make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Better Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Blaham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Next, we have case BOA 1585769 with the address of 538 Blue Hill Avenue. If the applicant hands or they represent a person, would they please explain to the board?
Hi, okay, I do see a raised hand, one second. Caller six one seven four four five, I sent a request on you. Are you wanting to speak on behalf of this project? Or is anyone else on for this proposal? I found guests. Hi.
Hi, good morning. My name is Amy Peppin. I'm the owner of the food truck. I would like to be in that location, trying to sell burgers and be part of the community. I deal all the process with the community, with the flyers and everything. So it's going to be a brand-new trailer. It's a, a trailer that we made in Florida for a specific purpose. So everything is working properly. We got the health department and the fire department inspection and permit. So I would like to be there and be part of the community. We use supporters. Thank you.
So can you clarify what hours you're looking for? Because there, we have received quite a number of letters with concerns about your hours of operation, trash, et cetera. So it'd be helpful for you to address those issues.
Yes, we would like to be there from seven to one.
Seven PM to 1 AM?
Yes.
Okay.
From Wednesday to Sunday.
Wait, what is, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear. Was it AM or PM?
Seven PM to 1 AM.
Oh, 1 AM, okay, thank you, sir.
Wednesday to Sunday, you said?
Yes, Wednesday, Wednesday to Sunday. And the trash, we're going to be collecting the trash. We're going to have a pay control person that's going to be doing the process every time that we need them. Because we know that really important for the community, for us, that we're going to be selling food to get everything clean. We explain to the community, I know they are a little concerned about the hours, but I was trying to explain to them that this is like a food that is sold most of the time at nighttime. And the tire shop, they close at eight, so we don't want to be there like earlier. Then it's going to compromise their job. So we are trying to be, you know, working and not be on the way with them. But we know if we have to change our hours, we're going to be able to see what's going to be the best solution. We don't want to have no music, nothing. We're going to have a person that's going to be around, taking care of everything, the trash, keeping everything clean. Because if something comes, it's going to affect us, so.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Yeah, I got one small question. I'd just like to know, because I'm kind of familiar with that area, where exactly would the truck be located at?
Yes, it's going to be inside of the tire shop, in the stiver, stiver street side, but it's going to be on, inside of the tire shop. Just, just right there on the little building is. So we're going to be just right there. We don't want to be on the street. We're going to be inside.
Okay.
That is possible for, for you to, and all the board.
And are you operating elsewhere? Or is this the only location you're intending, since you noted it's Wednesday to Sunday?
Right now, I only have that location. We would like to be there. That way, the people's going to know that we're going to be there and they can go over there. So all the permits and, and license, we are getting from that location.
Okay. Other questions from the board?
Yeah.
So in terms of your parking, are you, are you affiliated with the tire shop?
Yes, we're going to be doing a list with the person.
So, in terms of, so you said you would have someone who is responsible for cleaning up. Is that going to be for the entire area or just around the truck itself?
We're going to be doing like a specific on the area of the truck, but we're going to be mindful with the area. So, because if we see some trash that is from our truck, we have to pick it up. Because we're going to be, we're going to get like trash bins and containers, but sometimes people...
Okay, I'm sorry. I guess my concern is for what we heard, if there is trash on the, on the entire lot, then that's, that, what you're cleaning up with the truck is probably not going to be around the truck, it's probably not going to be adequate.
Yes, the, when we went over there, I, I saw the tire shop really clean. I don't see no trash. It's like, for me, it's like a normal tire shop, a lot of wheels and all the mechanic stuff. But we're going to be taking care of the trash. If we see trash, even if there is no around of the truck, if that is on the street, we're going to pick it up. Because we know if the city gets dirty, then we're going to be dirty with the rats and everything. So we want to keep everything clean. That way, everybody can be happy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Quick question. How many jobs will you be creating with this food truck?
It's going to be my husband and me for now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm trying to do my best with my English, sorry.
Same here.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I would like to know, have you done any kind of research to know whether there's a need for late evening food around the area? Like, do you know, what are your demographics that you're, that you're providing for, those like hours of eight to one in the morning? And then, given that it's, you know, very late in the morning and you're in a residential area, what are some of your security plan that you have in regards to, you know, protecting your, you know, the person behind, you know, you or your husband, you know, because you're dealing with cash? So I'll be curious to know about that. Or if there's an incident, what's your security plan?
Yes, we live around there. We have family around there. We always are talking with the friends that we have over there, too. We always going through that street, the area, checking how it goes, how it works. We know it's like a residential area, but that street is like commercial. And that's a lot, a lot of people going on that street. So that's what we are trying to do that time. I know probably if, that is not possible that time, we can work on it. But we're going to have a person that's going to be walking around when it is really late, especially on Saturdays and Fridays and Sundays, that people likes to go out, to be like taking care of us, the area. I mean, we don't want to look like we are alone there. Because we know it's like money, that we're going to be taking care. And people want to be safe. So we're going to have a person that's going to be walking around when it is really late. That way, we don't feel alone. And people that stop and get some food and just go, because we don't have, no shares, nothing. They're going to grab the food and they have to leave. Feels safe when they stop by.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, yeah, I think I just, the, all the questions and dialogue have been great, but still, I'm still a little bit confused because, you know, I think the BPDA memo is helpful. It's not even clear kind of why this particular element was cited. So obviously, we're, we're moving forward with this, you know, other protectional provision that was cited here. I'm not aware, not familiar that food trucks often go through zoning. But I, I think that the only point therefore I want to make is that I know that there was a lot of opposition that has come up from this, from the community and from Project Right. And I think that it would be helpful, I don't have the answer, but there must be others that govern the hours and licensing of the food trucks. And so I, you know, there's a discussion here of the seven PM to 1 AM, the trash pickup and other things. And I think that if someone on the call can help, great. If not, then the neighborhood should be directed to sort of talk to the Office of Economic Conclusion or others who deal with this. Because all of these other, all of these matters like hours are just not, you know, in front of us and not sort of relevant to this.
Madam Chairman, may I speak?
Who is this?
I'm Barbara. I live in, my mom bought the house from parents after World War II. They bought the house at three twenty.
If you want to pause, please, please pause for a second. We're, we'll get to public testimony, so we'll...
Oh, thank you. I'll pause, thank you. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Aiken, I think that's a great segue to perhaps ask Mr. Hampton to weigh in on this matter of other protectional conditions, as well as the matter of hours and, you know, provisos to that effect.
Sure, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. ISD cited them under conditional use because, you know, I'm guessing that it's a conditional use in this area of Blue Hill Ave. Food trucks typically are not on private property, right? So if they are on public property, it's at the discretion of the various city agencies to allow and issue permits for this. But since it's on private property, there has to be some sort of zoning law to go with it. And if you read Article Six, specifically Six Four of the code, the board is allowed to put certain provisos on conditional use approvals, whether it be hours of operation, trash recycling, location of premises, you know, whatever the board deemed is necessary. So that's where ISD issued under conditional use permit. I, I don't know really how to persuade the board to put any sort of provisos on this. We are in favor of the food truck on site. If the hours of operations are a concern to the board and to the public, the board is offered the opportunity to limit the hours of operation. That's specifically one of the paragraphs in Section Six dash four. So I hope I didn't make this any more confusing than...
Nope, that was very helpful, Mr. Hampton. Thank you.
Mr. Hampton, we can also put forward on a, kind of an annual basis to be renewed again, correct?
You can. You actually have done this on other cases. Where you put a sunset clause and...
Correct.
...the petitioner to come back. So yes, you can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So with that, let's open it up to public testimony.
Hey, Madam Chair, members of the board. Chris Green from the Office of Neighborhood Services, deferring to the board. The applicant has completed their community process. Thus, we held an abutters meeting on April 24th. We have since received five letters of opposition for the project from immediate abutters and the local civic. Pasadena, Supple Columbia Roads Neighborhood Association have concerns regarding potential disorderly gatherings, excessive music, double parking, other abutters citing potential health impacts, damage and disruption to area residents, and concerns regarding hours of operation that may result in late-night parties with excessive loud and late-night music. Again, we just for support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mike?
Hi, my name is Michael Cozoo from Project Right. Address 320 to Letter A, Blue Hill Avenue. We are submitting our opposition based upon a number of feedback that we received from abutting residents. There are four or five immediate locations in that area that are late-night, excessive loud music that require constant police presence to follow through. This project would, especially if it stays open until 1 AM, will just continue to be a place of food for all this illegal gatherings and all this excessive and late-night loud music issues. It'll just create, expand the issues. There's been two homicides in the immediate area within the last year. There was just a shooting down the block yesterday morning at 12:30 in the morning, within what would be the proposed operating hours. We think that it just aggravate the existing safety issues that we, that we face. And there's no comprehensive plan. And we fear for the safety of this operator, because they don't really have a clear safety plan on how to address these issues.
Mr. Cozoo, how late are the others open, just for a point of reference?
There are, there's a, it's more illegal outside gatherings on a parking lot. There's a small restaurant that's trying to get a liquor license at 2 AM that we're opposing. Old Road is an outside gathering. And across the street, there's, there's a lot of outside gatherings that are going on.
Thank you.
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ayio Ayemidewunweo from the Office of City Council, Brian Morell. And for all the reasons that were stated previously, including but not limited to the noise and the sanitary conditions, the council would like to defer for further community engagement.
Thank you. I'm an iPhone caller. Another woman that was on earlier. Anyone muted? Let's go back, four four five, I sent another request on mute. Is there anyone else looking to give testimony here?
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead. Can we say your name and address?
I can, I can speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Madam Chairman and the board. And we appreciate everyone, what you're doing. My parents bought this house after World War II, in 1957. We have been through a lot. We have, like Mike said, it's been killing here, killing in the backyard. We had a man who sold fruits and vegetables. He, they would drop them all on the street. I have pictures of a rat weighing about two pounds. I think the crow killed him. But anyway, besides that, my little niece, one day, yeah, comes to me, Barbara, Barbara, come quick. I go on the porch. This is at Putting Stone Park. People are having sex. So I call City Hall. This was 34311. And this lady was wonderful. She said, I'm going to get a police out there right now. From that day on, Sergeant Holm, who has retired, did an excellent job. She patrolled Putting Stone Park every hour with her platoon. And she just didn't look at one side. She would be nice to them and say, no, you can't stay here. And we all began to work together. A food truck, we have Burger King, which has always been robbed, about four blocks away. We have loads of restaurants in this area. Now, she put up a food truck. Last Sunday night, I looked out from my mother's porch, there were 15 cars parked on the opposite side, which is supposed to be no parking. They went in the liquor store, which the liquor store is no problem. They go there, if they meet each other, they stay in front and do their drinking. And then on Friday night, we have the dust bike people coming by. Now, you hear we have single parking, but these people do double parking when they want to go in the liquor store. What will happen between a liquor store and a food truck in this neighborhood? People pay taxes. We're all older. This is not the neighborhood to put up a food truck, not at the moment. We've seen enough. Soldier got killed right in front of the house. Everyone was afraid to say, who, who did it? We can't go through this anymore. Too many killings. We had a boat coming to my sister's house downstairs when that young girl got killed across the street. So I think, in my opinion, we would love to share with people, but right now, we've been through enough. Maybe she could find another spot to put a food truck. And I appreciate you all listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other raised hands, Jessica?
Oh, you don't, Madam Chair, thanks.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'm looking at the map and I read the recommendation from the BPDA. I don't see big or really zoning violations here. And I see that there is a pizza place next block, the Stages Pizza, that also closes at one in the morning. So not seeing really zoning violations, I make a motion for approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stambridge? Okay, Mr. Stenbridge.
No. I believe they are honest, and the vendors are honest in what they're saying and what they'll try and do. I believe the situation in the neighborhood just may not put them in the best position to succeed. So I'll vote no.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
I'm gonna go with a no because I was very interested to understand what the security plan was, you know, just with any kind of establishment, commercial establishment, whether it's a food truck at a smaller scale or a brick-and-mortar commercial venue. It's always important to understand the security plan. And so for those reasons, I am saying no.
Okay. Mr. Langham?
That's a very busy area at night, so I'm gonna vote no.
Ms. Weewell?
Yeah, I'm voting yes. I agree with what Mr. Valencia outlined. You know, I think with the zoning considerations, you know, they're essentially asking to operate a food truck on this site. And I can't see any reasons to really deny this per the zoning, so yes.
Mr. Aiken?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I'll be voting no. It was very helpful to have Jeff Hampton explain kind of the B P A memo and the relationship to the other conditional, other conditions necessary. But I think that it sounds like there's some work to be done regarding hours. Maybe not so much location, but just sort of overall communication before noting that this is an approval that allows us to move forward.
Thank you. The chair votes no, the motion does not carry. Do I need another motion?
Darwin?
Yes.
Okay, may I have another motion?
I would make a motion to defer without prejudice, or I guess deny without prejudice. So that, sorry, thank you. Been a few hearings for me. A motion to deny without prejudice so that there's some opportunity for further dialogue with the community, particularly around some of the safety and security and hours of operation. Sounds like those things could lead this to possibly move forward.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yep.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
No, because I think what the motion is putting forward is, what's in front of us is basically the condition of use still stands regarding whether a food truck can be on private property. And I think what is being put forward are kind of the minutia of certain provisos. So I'm saying no because I don't, I don't think it holds for zoning.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
I'm, I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Thank you.
Since we, since we passed the 11 o'clock hour, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 11 o'clock hour. Hearing done, then we'll move on to the next case, which is case BOA 1602440, with the address of 9 Fuller Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, if they please explain the case to the board.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Moranti, business address of 168 H Street, first floor, South Boston. Joining me today is the applicant, Anthony Monahan, as well as the project architect, Eric Zacherson. This is a proposal to preserve the existing structure, demolish an existing one-and-a-half-story garage in the rear, and erect a new vertical in rear addition to contain a total of 14 units with 12 ground-floor parking spaces. This is a 10,550-square-foot lot. The property is located .1 miles away from Ashmont Station and three parcels away from Dorchester Avenue. Abutting the rear yard is the site of the former St. Mark's Social Club that was recently approved by this board for 21 units. Also, abutting on the northeast corner is a developed five-story apartment building. And at the southern corner is a six-story mixed-use building. The erection of a multifamily dwelling is in line with the planning goals of 2030 to increasing the city's housing stock along area service by the transit. The applicant understands the need to create more affordable housing opportunities and is required to provide 13% of this project, if approved, as affordable, but has committed to increase the actual percentage to 20%, which equates to three units as affordability. Again, this project is gonna be home ownership, which will provide more ownership opportunities in the city. There will be four one-bedrooms, four two-bedrooms, and six three-bedrooms ranging from approximately 600 square feet to 1,370 square feet. Ground floor will consist of parking for 12 vehicles, five compact spaces, and seven full-size spaces, along with a bike storage room, storage space for each unit, and mechanicals. Level one will consist of four units within the building. Level two will consist of four units. And level three will consist of six units. We have the following violations. We have a use violation as we are proposing 14 total units in the two F sub-districts. But the proposal is in line with the planning goals of Boston 2030 of increasing the housing stock, as well as providing more affordability home ownership opportunities. For area ratio violation, we're proposing a 1.5, and a 1.5 is compliant. Again, the proposed density aligns with the goals outlined in the planning context of allowing more density for mixed-use corridors with transient service, transit service. Height, we have a violation in stories and feet. The proposal calls for four stories, 43 feet 5 inches in height, and two-and-a-half stories, 35 feet, is compliant. But again, the density aligns with the goals in the planning context as previously stated. The side yard violation, proposal is compliant on the right-hand side, but is non-conforming on the left-hand side with a setback of 3 feet 5 inches. 10 feet is what is required by the code. This type of setback is very similar within this neighborhood. We have a rear yard insufficiency. The rear yard setback is approximately 15 feet 3 inches to the building and 13 feet 3 inches to the rear decks. A 30-foot setback is compliant with the code. However, the distance in the rear to the abutting recently-approved project is very close to 100 feet away. Parking is insufficient. Code requires 1.5 parking spaces per unit. And this proposal calls for 12 total ground-floor parking spaces, which is aligned with the initiative reducing dependency on private vehicles. There is also a violation for loading as this proposal does not include a loading bay. In concluding, the mayor's initiative increasing the housing stock is to provide more dense projects within transient neighborhoods as we are a mere .1 miles away from the Ashmont train station. In fact, there have been many other recently-approved dense projects along this block and approved by this board. Lastly, this proposal has 54% lot coverage with 2,800 square feet of green space, which amounts to approximately 25% of the lot being designated as green. The planning department recommendation for this proposal is support. However, they do mention some concerns that can be addressed during design review. With that being said, Madam Chair, I'm gonna pass it over to you for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
I got one small question.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna know, I just wanna know in that area, how many other four-story buildings are located in that area?
So, yeah, great question. So a couple of things that I did highlight, so the, we do have, on the northeast corner is a developed five-story apartment building. And at the southern corner is a six-story mixed-use building.
Okay, I only why I ask that, 'cause I know in that area is a lot of three-story, three-story buildings. I was just curious about that.
Yes, and then, and then the recently-approved project in the rear of us for 21 units. And again, this parcel is three parcels away from Dorchester Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Here, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Chris Green from the Office of Neighborhood Services. We are deferring to the board, but the applicant has completed our community process. We did hold a butters meeting on November 29th. And they were also sent to the Ashmont Civic in February. The Ashmont Civic took no opinion on the matter. We also have received no letters from the butters, but have heard concerns regarding the loss of the current home and its existing conditions, as well as a concern for privacy from some of the decks and an overall lack of single-family ownership character in the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Ayo from the Office of City Council, Brian Morell. And in regards to the civic, for all the reasons stated previously and having no letters of opposition on the record, we would like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Okay, we have another raise hand here. Antonio and then Shane?
Yes. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, sir.
Um, yes, my name is Antonio Rodriguez. I am the owner of 27 Fuller Street. I love the project. The developers been very accommodating. And he's been honest and upfront with the neighbors.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Shane?
Hi, I'm an abutter at 47 Millwood Street. Know the developers. I like the project. I'm voting in support. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have no additional raise hands.
Madam Chair, can you read the B P D A's feedback?
Mr. Hampton, would you like to? Okay, I don't hear from Mr. Hampton. Are you asking for what their recommendation is, ma'am?
Well, I mean, I can restate it there. The recommendation was for the applicant to work with minimum side yard setbacks of, you know, 5 feet. And that the project complies with the rear yard setback and maximum height of three stories. You know, and so I guess, I wish Jeff was on, online because I'm having a hard time understanding, how can the applicant get 14 residential units with their recommendations of pulling in the setbacks? And also the height. And so the question is for the applicant, are you okay with the reduction of your units based on the massive reconfiguration?
That's what it's on.
Yes, Ms. Bede Barazza, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Again, I know, I did read the recommendation as well. And I believe these dimensional requests can be worked through design review if approved. So I believe that's at the end of the recommendation. That's what the B, well, not the B P D A anymore, the Planning Department of the City of Boston. Recommendation was for approval, subject to review the site plan as well as the setbacks, which all can be handled through design review.
Sorry, Ms. Bede Barazza, I was, I had to take a call for a minute, and I didn't hear your request.
Yeah, no, I was just saying.
And I know that that recommendation is confusing, and I understand that. But this is one of those things where I believe I can work out with the numbers through design review. A lot of units have been put in that area, on Fuller and on Bailey especially. So we're in support of the number of units. We believe here at the Planning Department that we can adjust the building to fit in better with the neighborhood.
Okay, great.
And we don't, we don't wanna deny the project based on the number of units or anything, but we believe that we can help with the design of the building.
Okay. All right, sounds good. So with that, may I have a motion?
I'll put a, and we've heard public testimony, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I'd like to perform a motion of approval with a proviso that the project be reviewed by the Planning Department for site plan review to work with the minimum side yard setback of a minimum of 5 feet per neighborhood consistency. And that the project also complies with zoning rear yard setback. And to also work with the Planning Department regarding the height of the building.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could we all, could we include in the rural housing proviso on what you represented?
Why?
Yes, so, and additional proviso that.
That's for a game.
And additional proviso that the applicant also works with Mayor Housing Department to provide some affordable units.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yep.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1598326, with the address of 1256 to 1262 River Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, if they please explain to the board.
Yes, Mr. Stenbridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Derek Small of a business address of 51 Dobson Road. Today, and with me today is Robert Tavi and Vincent Buiega, who are the operators of the function hall. Today, we're here seeking relief to change the occupancy of the building from a function hall to a function hall with live entertainment. The zoning sub-district here is NS 2, and we are seeking a conditional use permit to continue the use as a function hall as it is already operating, has been operating for over two years now, with the approval, previous approval by this board. But we are seeking to add the live entertainment to the zone.
Okay, thank you. Questions from the board? Here are none. May I have public testimony?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and board members. My name is, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the High Park Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting as well as a civic meeting. We have received no letters of support and no letters of opposition. No concerns or opposition were raised or voiced during the abutters meeting. They went before the civic and received approval and support. Thank you for your time. And the mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the judgment of the board at this time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raise hands. Do that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Have a good day.
Next, we have case BOA 1588958, with the address of One Oregon Park. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, if they please explain the case to the board.
Hi, I'm Alex Medrano. I'm the homeowner. Andrew will be, my architect, will be going over the plan. So Andrew, if you have, if you're ready to go. You just need to be, you just need to raise your hand so it can be added.
What's his, what's his name, so that I can ask which one it was?
Andrew Gassis.
Okay, Andrew, I just have to request that I meet you.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Um, yep, so wait, Alex, do you wanna go ahead and start?
Yeah, so I can give a brief intro. My name is Alex Medrano. I'm filing for approval for, to build the second floor on a Cape-style home on One Oregon Park. Currently, it's about 1,100 square feet. We're just looking to, to do a full renovation at a second floor, a full second floor. So it is a rear and a, and a, and a front setback. And that the rear, the side setbacks are building within its current structure. And we are adding a couple bump outs, and as you can see there, a mudroom. And the mudroom is a, is a front setback as well. So if you, if you go. setback as well. So if you, if you go a little bit higher, you can, you can zero into those setbacks.
Good luck. Good luck.
Uh, and in addition, I've already, um, I've had the neighborhood meetings. I've talked to my direct abutters, um, neighbors to the side and front, um, and I haven't had any issues. Everybody supports the plan. The home does fit the neighborhood. Um, it is, it's built in within a point 363 FAR. Um, I believe I'm allowed point five. Um, that it's on a two-family, 5,000 square foot lot. Anything additional? Andrew, you want to feel like that?
Um, no, nothing at this time.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. Can I have public testimony?
Madam Chairman and members of the board, thank you for the record. My name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Jamaica Plan Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting as well as a civic meeting. We have received one letter of a list of 10 supporters and no letters of opposition. During the abutters meeting, we received overwhelming support from abutters as well as unanimous approval from the civic organization. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is I O from the Office of City Council, Worrell. I request this project, um, having not received any letters of opposition, would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, if there are no one else, we have no additional raise hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve this project.
May I have a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazan?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1598999 with the address of 34 Elgin Street.
I'm going to go with Cameron.
And or their, and or their representative present. If they please explain to the board.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Uh, my name is Kevin Kelleher. I own 34 Elgin Street. Um, it's the house that my grandfather bought in 1925 and it's been in the family trust. I just, uh, I lived there from 1989 until present and um I recently purchased it from the family trust in December. Um, I'm looking to increase the, uh, this is the layout. What you're looking at right now is the, uh, the survey of the land with the existing house and the setbacks. Um, one of the, one of the violations is the, uh, right side setback. It's at six and a half feet and I think it's required to have 10. Um, and I have a, I've talked to my neighbors on all the biting sides and I have letters from them with, I showed them this, uh, where's the camera? This letter here with all attachments um of the, what you're looking at with support from each of the neighbors on either side. So what we're proposing to do is to, uh, this is the basement in first floor. Here it is right here on the, open up some walls on the second floor. Um, and add a staircase and then the right picture with the second circle on it is the additional third floor space with dormers. There'll be a master bedroom that I'm going to be living in. Um, the first floor will be, uh, for a rental unit and I'm going to live on the second and third floor and the second unit. It will be one unit of two floors. So it'll be a master bedroom, uh, a living area, master bathroom and closet, uh, and then there'll be like, uh, a wet bar and just whatever, make some coffee and whatever up there on the third floor. This is the existing, the top is the existing layout of the, uh, left and right side. Get to that page. Existing front and rear elevation and then below that is the proposed front and rear elevation. And the next slide down would be the side view, the left side. Um, sorry, that's the right side view of, uh, the existing on the top and the proposed on the bottom and, uh, and then the right side or the left side view of the top view. So we'll just add additional living space for the second unit that I'm going to be living in. So we have violation of, uh, the rear would, uh, has a violation of distance for the third floor porch and then the side has a violation of, uh, not insufficient feet to the neighbor's side and then the excessive, uh, floor area ratio violation.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Hearing none. Can I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This applicant has completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on the 26th of March at which no concerns were raised. The West Roxbury Neighborhood Council voted to support this proposal. Additionally, our office has received three letters of support from abutters. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, no additional raised hands. Thanks.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion of approval with review from the Planning Department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazan?
Yes.
Mr. Langham? Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Next, we have two companion cases, first being case BOA 1547592 with the address of 900 Beacon Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1547593, also with the address of 900 Beacon Street. The applicant and or they're represented or present. If they please explain.
Hello, how's it going? Um, my name is Raymond. I'm applying for a patio at 900 Beacon Street. As stated, I'm trying to put, um, four tables there, total of 16 seats.
Okay. Is there, are there, is that it?
I don't think there's anything really that I need to talk about because, um, I guess, um, according to the violations, I wasn't really supposed to have a restaurant there, but I'm already in an existing restaurant at 908 Beacon. Uh, we're called Moatsunori Handroll Bar. I don't know how that happened with the, I guess, the use, the change of use wasn't done or something, but we were approved, we got the licenses, we went through everything, we got the health departments, everything was done according to whatever needed to be done. I didn't even know that we needed to do the change of use at the very beginning. I think it was like 2021. So, uh, yeah, we've been here for about a year. Pretty good. So that's basically all I need.
All right, ma, uh, any questions from the board? Hearing none. Can I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This applicant has completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted a, an abutters meeting on the 23rd of April at which questions were asked about the scope and size of the outdoor patio. The applicant additionally presented to the Autobahn Circle Neighborhood Association, which is an active civic group in this area. They are in support of this proposal and they are requesting that the proponent take steps to ensure that deliveries to the establishment occur in the rear of the property now that the front area will have a patio on it. This time, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, I have no raise hands.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazan?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
There Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair, uh, we'll ask once again about, uh, the case on Leyton Street, which would be
Yes.
Case BOA 1579638 with the address of 172 Leyton Street. If the representative and or, and or the applicant is present.
Ms. Grant?
I just have to request I'm meeting, Ms. Grant.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, fabulous. Okay. Thank you, everyone. This is Sarah Grant. I'm so sorry for my audio issues earlier and I really appreciate you permitting me to present later. Um, I did also have a presentation to share, but I think I can just explain verbally. So in brief, my husband and I are the homeowners at 172 Leyton Street in East Boston. We've been in this home for about three years now and I've been making a lot of necessary improvements during that time. It was not well maintained by previous owners and it was actually condemned at one point in the 90s. So we've inherited a lot of deferred maintenance, but our current project is a renovation to address some important structural issues that we've uncovered with the exterior walls in the eastern front corner of the house. Oh, great, that's my presentation. Okay, so that's the house. Um, so that, uh, you'll see there's kind of two front doors. This is a single-family home. It's not a duplex. It just happens to have two front doors, which is kind of a quirky thing. So that second front door to the right on the photo above the garage is the room that's having this issue. Above that sits a roof deck that you can see there too on the second floor, which is, um, kind of a dilapidated structure, uh, that's probably not original to the house. I don't know when that was added, but the roof deck is essentially the, the problem. It's funneling a lot of rainwater down the side of the house behind the siding and along the exterior walls um of that area outlined in red. So our project is to simply repair and replace the rotted walls on the first floor in that red outlined area. And then we want to demolish that second floor deck since it is structurally unsound and it's not an area that we use anyway, but we don't want to sacrifice that square footage. So we're hoping that we can just enclose it, make it a room up there, um, and just turn it into living space. You can go to the next slide. So this is the existing conditions of that first floor room. I had to tear out the drywall and the flooring to expose the extent of the wood rot. That second, um, picture on the right shows kind of the corner that is most affected. That dark wood area is all very rotten. You can like push a screwdriver right through to the outside of the building from the inside through that, through that wall and the sill is just disintegrated. Um, the next slide also has more photos. So now every time it rains, this was after like a late drizzle rain day, but we've just got water intrusion. Every time it rains coming through the side of the house, it just kind of rains in that corner of the building, seeps down into the garage below and rains there. When I removed all the drywall and, and flooring, I uncovered quite a lot of mold growth as well, which is a separate, you know, health concern just for my family. We have a baby in the home, so it's, it's been sitting like this for, for a year as we've been seeking approval to, um, go on with this project. So I, you know, we're really hopeful that we can get this remedied as quickly as possible for both the structural concerns and, and health concerns in the house. Go to the next slide. Um, there, yeah. Okay, so these are the, the renderings of the existing conditions on the left showing that second, you know, front door on the first floor and the roof deck on the second floor that we're seeking to remove the line drawings on the right or what it would look like, um, after the addition is in place. So just really a new like dorm or roof area. Um, but nothing that extends the existing footprint of the building. This would all sort of be within the same outline of the, of the current building, just removing that, that deck and making it a room.
Right, thank. Are there questions from the board? Okay, hearing done. Let's take some public testimony.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Eva Jones. I'm the Community Engagement Specialist for East Boston with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board for 172 Leyton Street, but a community process was hosted through subcommittee firing that was distributed on April 28 and ended on May 12. There was no community opposition to the project. Uh, the applicant did meet with the Orient Heights Civic Council and due to the small scale of the project, the civic association declined to have them present before them, uh, but they did support the project. With that, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services will defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no additional raised hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this project.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazan?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
At this time, uh, being 11:35, we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or referrals from the 11:30 hearing. Hearing none. We'll move on to the hearing schedule for 11:00 AM. Bear with me, folks. There are 21 cases that are all related.
Oh, boy.
Um, what I will do is I will read those on the same street. Um, look, I'll, I'll suggest that we, um, examine, vote on those and then we'll move on to the next set for the next street and then the next set for the next. So with that, we begin with case, uh, these are all Mayor's, these are all Article 80 small projects, uh, worked on with, by the Mayor's Office of Housing. So we'll begin with case BOA 1577641, the address of 141 Howell Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1577646 with the address of 143 Howell Street. Then we have case BOA 1577633, the address of 145 Howell Street. Then we have case BOA 1577638 with the address of 147 Howell Street. And finally, for this group, we have case BOA 1577654 with the address of 149 Howell Street. With that, we'll ask if there is representative or, or the, and or the applicant who will explain the cases to the board.
Uh, Mr. Elton, are you speaking? I, I, have I? Okay, yes. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, good morning, uh, members of the board, Madam Chair. My name is Nick Elton from the firm West Work Architects. Um, I'm here to present the Garrison Trotter Phase Four, uh, project. This is the, this is the, as, as is suggested, a fourth phase of a project that was put out for, uh, proposals by the City of Boston, uh, generally designed and conceived by the now Mayor's Office of Housing. Um, may I have the next, uh, sorry, and, uh, participating with me is Windale Development and Crosswings Enterprise. The two owners are Arnold Johnson and George Chin. They were also the previous developers and, and contractors for the construction of what is now a total of, will, will be now a total of 73 first-time homeownership, what of a homeownership project. Board of Home Ownership Project. Next image, please. As you can see on the slide below, the red is the project that is under consideration, the Garrison Trotter Phase IV project. It is a total of 21 units in 13 buildings, which are a combination of pre-existing single-family homes, attached to, semi-detached two families and stacked with families. The yellow and the blue represent the Phase I's, II's, and III's that were completed over the last six or seven years, eight years, I think, all which were done with the same team, Windale Development, Crosswinds Enterprises, and I also served as the architect on all of those projects. You can see the coloration for yellow for the Phase I and Phase II and III were clumped into one phase, which is the blue. Next image, please. The project in question, as you can see, occupies, is fronting on three streets. And as you can see, that there's a series of buildings that are either fronting on Hallsworthy or Holland Street. And Harold Street, the buildings that you see running vertically in the scheme. This is an extension of an existing street that is being extended. It is currently an alleyway that is not open to the public and it will be hanged into a new proposed public street. Next image, please. So this is a breakdown of all the different unit types. There are six different building types here. As I've said, there's a combination of side-by-side two families, which is the CC or MB type, what you see there. There are the standalone single families, which are the A5 types, and the types D that you see there as well. And then there are the, sorry, not the types D. And the type K3 is also a standalone single family. And then there are some stacked two families where there's a one-bedroom on the first floor and a three-bedroom on the second and third floor. Those two units are designed to be handicap-adaptable and converted to handicap-accessible units in the future. For the lower levels, all the other units are multi-story and are not handicap-accessible. May I have the next slide, please? So this is a breakdown of the total number of units by two-bedroom, three-bedroom. I'm sorry, I had said that there was one-bedrooms on the first floor. There are actually two bedrooms on the first floor of the stacked units, which are the ones that are 41 AD-Hollander and 61 A-Hallsworthy. So you can see that there's a a total of 23 units that are being proposed here, two which will be rental because the two families will be owned by the same owner. All the rest are designed to be new homeownership's family housing. Next, next image, please. So this is a breakdown of all the various-- it's important to mention that the housing that's proposed here is consistent with the housing that was done for previous Garrison Trotter I, II, and III. And in fact, they're similar in appearance. They're not identical, but they're very similar in appearance. There, and we will-- if you can see across the top of the table here, there is a, there was-- we were cited for excessive floor area ratio, insufficient flat yard, insufficient alignment or nodal, nodal issues, usable space, lot width, lot frontage, and limitation on off-street parking. And I, obviously, as you can see, we were cited for many of them for all-- in many cases for a lot of them, and in many cases for not. And what I'm proposing to do is to address this globally for the project. And you will see that we will be presenting the responses to each one of these particular situations. So, just one more time. In terms of the floor area ratio, excessiveness, we subsequently have issued sufficient proof and calculations to show that none of these buildings exceed the floor area ratio. So I believe that, at the time that these were cited and that the application was made, that was the situation. But currently, that is not the situation. And we will show you sufficient information to address that. I'm just trying to give you the overview very quickly. The front yard insufficient has to do with the nodal calculations and we will be demonstrating nodal calculations to indicate that the front yards are sufficient. Building alignment is the same thing. It has to do with the nodal calculations and we will be providing information that will demonstrate that clearly that that is not the case. Open space insufficient. For the ones that were, where that was cited, we did a complete calculation to show that the open space, in fact, is sufficient. Lot width insufficiency has to do with corner lots where there is a slight turn in the corner so that the frontage is slightly curtailed, but the actual lot widths are sufficient and do meet the requirements. And the same thing is true of the lot width frontage. And finally, the limitation on off-street parking. There are a series of the driveways at the sides of these buildings that are less than five feet away from the property line. This is the situation that is true in most of this neighborhood currently and the situation that was included in Garrison Trotter I, II, and III. And we're hoping that you will allow us to extend that. May I have the next image, please?
Mr. Elton, just take a quick pause. Are there questions or concerns about any of these noted violations?
Just very quickly, I am reading the comment from the Boston Transportation Department. They are asking for 47 Hollander Street to remove front yard parking space. So do you have front yard parking space in front of 47 Hollander?
We do not. We have no front yard parking spaces. We have, we have developed-- I believe that that concern has to do with the nodal setbacks. And we have, the nodal setbacks have been recalculated, as you will see in the slide images that we're about to show you. And we have developed it such that the parking will be pulling back on the driveways beyond the front yard setback.
Other questions from the board?
Well, I'm sorry, it looks like there is a driveway from Harold Street for 47. Because it's a corner lot. So I wonder if they're referring to that driveway? That looks almost like a parking spot.
Can we go back to the master site plan, please? The one before that, yep. I'm sorry, so which one are you?
I think it's the one at the corner of Harold and Hollander, the 47. If you, yeah, zoom in. Nope. No, if you go down, so right there, where you see 47.
It's on the, to the right corner, bottom right corner.
Yes, 47, the driveway is sufficient, yeah. The bars can pull in beyond the front yard setback. We're perfectly willing to provide you with calculations that show you that in more detail, if you'd like.
Other questions from the board?
We do have a presentation that demonstrates each one of these violations.
If you could quickly walk through them. I don't think we need all 16 slides. If there's some representative slide-- Great.
Okay. Can we move, can we move forward, please? So look at the calculations. I think the situation has been that the reviewer here was not willing to accept the calculations that were done by our own office or the previous calculations that were done by the surveyor. There were two, there were two items at issue. One, that he felt that we were, in some cases, going in front of the nodal setback. But these calculations, which I'm happy to go to with in detail, demonstrate that we are not in excess of the nodal setback anywhere. Possible exception is the extension of Harold Street. Because Harold Street is effectively a new street for a block. But there are no other buildings on that street. So we are assuming that the nodal setback from the, from the, from other portions of Harold Street limits block over would serve as the, as the, as the nodal setback. May I have the next image, please? So this is an overview that shows you the nodal setbacks of where they are based on graphically, so it's an easier thing for you to be able to see. And I think it demonstrates that none of the buildings are in excess of the nodal setback currently. You can see that on Harold Street, we had to use the nodal setbacks from their budding block to be able to determine what the setback requirements were. We are obviously assuming that the setbacks in this neighborhood, the front yard setbacks in this neighborhood are 20 feet or the nodal setbacks of a budding buildings. And we are making use of that nodal setback permit. So we are, we have designed it to limit. And that is the way that Garrison Trotter I, II, and III were also designed. The reviewer in this case said that if you have a nodal setback, we can't remember what it is, you can either set back the 20 feet that are required or you must set back exactly the nodal setback. We have gone further back than the nodal setback and we believe that is permitted. And that is, there are precedents for that in many, 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 many projects in the city of Boston and also the previous three projects, the three phases that were done on Harold Street. May I have the next image, please? So, the minimum width here, the minimum width that is cited here is as being too small. The required limit for this building is 45 feet. As you can see here, we have a 50-foot limit. I think the reason that this is problematic is because it's on a corner and you can see it on the corner. It is, it's got a, 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 a linear aspect to it, which makes the frontage slightly less than 45 feet. I think that that's a legality and we don't believe that that the lot width would apply to that particular issue. May I have the next image, please? We were cited for inadequate open space. We have done an open space calculation that is shown here. The required amount is 650 square feet. We calculate that there is 2,030 square feet. We are not quite sure why we were, why we were cited. And in every situation where we were cited, we believe we exceed the open space, the usable open space. I want to state again that we did receive the projections. The reviewer, who I think was quite thorough, went back and forth. He seemed like he was extremely busy. And at some point, the developers, Windale Development, decided they would just go for the zoning board of appeals and try not to get some of these things withdrawn. One more image, please? One more image, please? Next image, please? This is FAR. We demonstrated the FAR for every project that we were considerably below it. And most of them were around .6 and the FAR that's permitted is .8. May I have one more image, please? And I finally wanted to talk about the parking. Though most of the parking is located in the driveways alongside the buildings. And in many cases, the driveways are are set within the side yard setback. There is a stipulation in the code that the, that the side, that the driveways not be within five feet of the side yards. And for instance, in this particular case, it's 2.3 feet on the side yard. There are, this is a precedent that was set by the previous Garrison Trotters I, II, and III. And finally, it's very obvious and evident in this neighborhood and community in general. I think that's the last slide. We have a couple of other examples of this, but I think that clearly demonstrated. We appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Are there other questions from the board? Hearing done, let's take public testimony.
Ladies and gentlemen, Chair, members of the board, Chris Green from the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed an extensive community process along with the Mayor's Office of Housing and the Planning Department. The Garrison Trotter Housing Committee have been cooperating with me back over a number of years as part of the Neighborhood Homes Initiative. We defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Okay, and I have some raised hands here. We just start. So Stephanie Silva, you're going to get testimony? From the Mayor's Office of Housing?
Thank you, Jessica. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Stephanie Silva, head development officer, the Mayor's Office of Housing. MOH supports this project and has been working with the team since their land designation and funding award in 2022. Will continue to work with the team as they progress towards construction. Thank you.
Okay, Nick. Nick, are you looking to present?
He already, he's the presenter.
I'm the presenter.
Oh, probably, okay. Mike, I'll show him. I've sent him a question.
Michael, close to Project Wright 320A, Blue Avenue. We have worked closely with the Garrison Trotter Neighborhood Association overall for phases. We support this project.
Thank you. And I have no additional reasons.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, this is such a great project. I would like to perform a motion of approval.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. Stembridge.
I'll ask you, the, as far as we know, these will be affordable homes for first, for home ownership. So I'll ask that if we can amend the provision just to make sure that they remain so.
They're part of the MOH project review. So typically, they're all affordable.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I think there is, there are some market rate, if I'm correct.
Does the proponent want to confirm? Mr. Elton?
I believe there are some market rate. I believe there are six units. But if, if I could have a moment, I'd rather communicate with--
Yes, I think there are, reading the memo, I think there are 16 affordable and seven market rate.
I apologize.
That's what I had to.
I apologize.
I believe the developer has signed up to further fire further. In any case, I'm voting yes.
Okay, so Mr. Valencia.
This is a great, amazing project and I vote yes.
Ms. Bada Brasa.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Wuelf.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Can I confirm, Mr. Perry? I thought you only read the first step. So do you have to read the rest? Because what are we approving? The whole thing or just the ones that you named?
I would suggest that I read the cases into the record. That, and then vote on them.
Okay, because I, yeah, because I don't, you didn't read all of them originally?
No, no, correct. So with that, we move on to the second step.
So can you read all of the rest into the record? Because that's what he presented, that's what Mr. Elton presented on. He presented on the whole, the whole thing.
Fair enough.
Thank you.
Again, with case BOA 1575239, with the address of 29 Howell Street. Next, we have case BOA 1575278, address of 31 Howell Street. Then we have case BOA 1575261, with the address of 41 to 41A Howell Street. Then we have case BOA 1575299-- Then we have case BOA 1575294 with the address of 45 Hollister Street. Next, we have case BOA 1575298 with the address of 47 Hollister Street. Then we have case BOA 1575887 with the case, with the address of 57 Hollister Street. Then we have case BOA 1575863 with the address of 59 Hollister Street. Continuing on, we'll go go to case BOA 1575254 with the address of 66 to 66A Hollister Street. Then we have case BOA 1575824 with the address of 70 Hollister Street. Then we have case BOA 1575282 with the address of 71 Hollister Street. Next, we have case BOA 1575847 with the address of 72 Hollister Street. Then we have case BOA 1575284 with the address of 73 Hollister Street. Next, then we have case BOA 1575838 with the address of 74 Hollister Street. Next, we have case BOA 1575869 with the address of 76 Hollister Street. Then we have case BOA 1575287 with the address of 78 Hollister Street. Finally, we have case BOA 1575290 with the address of 80 Hollister Street. And I hope everyone is still with me and we can move on. Madam Chair.
Thank you. So with that, may I have a motion?
We have to repeat our motion again? Cancel, please.
Yes, because Mr. Stembridge will.
Okay, I like to perform, I like to perform a motion of approval.
Can I have a second?
Okay.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Aiken.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Next, we have case BOA 1584537 with the address of 50 Sutherland Road. The applicant handled their representative's present. Please explain to the board.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Simon Brophy. I am attorney with Madam McLean and Fish, 155 Seaport Boulevard, representing the applicant Benchmark Senior Living. With me today are Lee Castiglione, the Development Manager for Benchmark, and Jesse Whitfeld, the Architect with Bechtel Frank Erickson Architects. The applicant is requesting two variances today related to the renovation project at Chestnut Park of Cleveland Circle, which is located at 50 Sutherland Road in Brighton. Chestnut Park is an existing assisted living facility in a multifamily residential zoning district. The building currently contains 84 assisted living and memory care units and a child daycare. The applicant is proposing the addition of 16 assisted living units. 10 will be on the first floor in the space that the child daycare is vacating and six will be on the ground floor, excuse me, in underutilized space. In the addition of the 16 units creates a violation. It is the reason for the first variance being requested for lot area insufficiency. The renovations will also include landscaping upgrades. Particularly, if you want to stop at this playground blue slide, in the renovations in the area, you can see in the lower left-hand corner, the daycare departure also creates space where their playground existed. So at the request of the VPA, the applicant has agreed not to increase the parking in that area where they would have to have added six spaces to be compliant. And they are instead, if you move to the next slide, going to do improved landscaping in that area. You can see where they're creating like a treeline avenue and a little pathway along the edge of Chiswick Road. Also, along with the project, but not creating any violations, the applicant is renovating common areas in the dining area in the building and adding an exterior deck along the Sutherland Road wing of the project, which you can see in this slide if you look at the white upperhand gray area. If you go back to the other side of the corner of Sutherland is the area where they're adding a deck so the memory care residents can have some outdoor experience without having to be brought downstairs, you know, to to get some fresh air. The project has been under review with the VPA since last August. They filed a filed a small project review application in January of 2024, held a community meeting in February, at which there was no opposition. And in May 2024, at the May 16th board meeting, the VPA board approved the project. They received a letter of support from Council Liz Braden and has been before the Aberdeen Architectural Conservation District commissioned twice for advisory review. And their input has informed the current design of the project. Lastly, they are also requesting a change in occupancy. When the project was originally built, they received zoning relief and used an occupancy as a landy unit, assisted living complex in preschool. And now they are going to mean an occupancy as a 100-unit assisted assisted living complex with incidental office, common kitchen, and other common amenities. I can pause at this time for any questions or we can walk through the architectural slides that show the location of the units on the first floor and the back floor.
Let's see if anyone has any questions and if, yeah, we can go from there. Any questions from the board? Ms. Brophy, are you okay if I proceed with public testimony and circle back as needed?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, let's take public testimony, Jessica.
Okay, everyone from ONS before we go to the community?
Yep.
Okay, go.
Hey, everyone. Hey, Madam Chair, members of the board. Chris Breen from the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed our community process, public meeting on February 6, and later VPA board approval at their public hearing. The public meetings were lightly attended. The applicant answered all questions and our office received no letters. We defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thanks. Then we'll go to Jeffrey Dolls and then Zoe and then Minor. I sent a request to mute all of you. We guess that was Zoe since you're unused.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Jeffrey. Yep, go on.
Yeah, I approve for Jody and Kurt to have their add an addition to their condo.
I don't think we're on the, I don't think we're on the same case. We're on 50 Sutherland Road. Please keep going.
Okay, Zoe, are you looking to give testimony on this proposal?
Yeah, my name is Zoe Chudie. I'm just the project assistant in the Development Review Division of the Planning Department. Ms. Brophy as well touched on all of my points here regarding the public process and board approval. Just wanted to state the planning department is in support of this project moving forward. So we'll defer judgment to the board as well. Thank you.
Thanks. And Minor?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Minor Perez representing Honderson Union Carpenter's, delivering work for the city of Baltimore. First of all, kudos to Mrs. Bronfro for a great presentation and we are in strong support of this project.
Thanks, and I have no additional raised hands.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion? Can I have a? Go ahead, Katie.
I have a motion of approval.
Now, a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Let's take a 15-minute break. You're welcome, Ms. Brophy. Let's take a 15-minute break and we'll be back.
Recording stopped.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
I'm present, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Valencia?
Present, Madam Chair.
Uh, Ms. Bede Barza?
Present.
Mr. Langham?
Present, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Weewell, Ms. Weewell?
Present.
Mr. Aiken?
Present.
Thank you. Where is yours, Mr. Stenbridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we'll pick up with the rediscussions scheduled for 11:30 a.m. Uh, we have two companion cases, that being BOA 1540041, with the address of 261 Princeton Street. And along with that, we have case BOA 1540166, also with the address of 261 Princeton Street. If the applicant and/or their representatives present, they can use this line through the board.
Thank you, Ms. Stenbridge. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago, with Drago in Tuscana, with the business address of 11th and Beacon Street, here on behalf of the applicant. My client, George Corris and Paul McNally, who's also the architect on the project and available to answer any questions as we get into the proposal. Uh, what you're looking at is a rendering of a proposed project at 261 Princeton Street. And by way of background, this project description has changed significantly uh, and is reflected in the plans that you are looking at today and have on record. Um, as we went through the deferral process, uh, we made significant changes to actually meet, which I'll get into, all of the dimensional regulations of an EBR-3 under the new Plan East Boston code. To note, this project was filed about a year and a half ago, prior to any knowledge of what the actual code was going to change to for this area. Uh, my client worked, uh, listened to the comments and the plan to make these changes over the last months during our deferral period. So the new proposal is to raise two existing structures. There's one in the front and one in the rear. There's an old abandoned garage in the back. It's two stories. And there's a two-story house in front. Um, it's in rundown shape, and I'll get into that in a minute. Uh, Madam Ambassador, if you could leave these pictures up, please. The proposal is to raise the existing structures and to erect a new residential condominium building that would have four units, two exclusive roof decks to the top floor, and two tandem interior parking spaces. Um, and you can see in these renderings both the back and front of the property, uh, which meets the streetscape of the other buildings that are about three to three-and-a-half stories in height. Just to note right now, the entire landscape of the yard and existing conditions is all hot-top with the two structures on it. Uh, if this project was to be approved, uh, we would now meet the new Plan East Boston requirement uh, for permeable lot areas. So we would go from a 7.2% permeable lot area uh, to now, uh, over 36.8%. All of that would be from a 30-foot rear setback. As you can see in the pictures here, there would now be all green space in the rear. If you could go to the next slide. Madam Ambassador, and this shows you a rear rendering where there would be all of that grass area that now is all hot-top. Uh, the garage, which I'll show you in a few slides, actually takes up the whole back area of the building. When we started this process, we had proposed a seven-unit building uh, with four parking spaces. Uh, we were at an additional story, and we're at 43 feet in height. Uh, and now we meet all of the dimensional regs, as I had mentioned, in the EBR-3 zone. If you go to the next slide, please. Uh, one more, I'm sorry. And this slide shows you, so the small structure is a zone as an existing, on perimeters, existing two-family. And then you can see the large, if you look in the corner, that's the front of the building. And the picture, photo above that shows that large structure behind it. There's also an existing driveway uh, to go to the back of the property, which causes all of this to be nothing but hot-top. Uh, under the new proposal, all of the two parking spaces and ground-floor unit would be accessed through a garage and front door. So that driveway would no longer exist, and it would also create that green space, as I had mentioned. Uh, just to go over the layout, uh, Madam Ambassador, if you want to start shifting to the plans. Uh, there's a garden-level unit. Uh, it's 1,275 square feet. Uh, this shows the parking as well, so this on that ground level. So there's a first unit, 1,275 square foot, two bedrooms, uh, and the two interior parking spaces shown, uh, on this, on the screen now. Uh, as we go up to the first unit, uh, we have another two-bedroom at 1,115 square feet, which also has a rear deck. Uh, as we go up to the second and third floor, these would be duplex units. These are both three-bedrooms of family-style units, um, also with a rear deck as well. And those would then have access on top of the building to two 12-by-12 exclusive roof decks that would go at those top-floor units. Uh, just to talk briefly about the new Plan East Boston. So this project was filed before the plan was into effect, long before. So we were still cited under the old code requirements. Uh, however, we still worked to meet the new dimensional regs under that Plan East Boston. So we would now meet the height in both stories. So three stories would be allowed. We would be at a maximum height of 33 feet, even though a 35-foot height is allowed in an EBR-3. Max lot coverage, 60% is allowed. We would be at 50. Uh, maximum building width is 50. We would be at 26.5. Uh, maximum building depth is 70. We'd be at 63.5. Uh, maximum building floor plate, 3,000. Uh, we would be at 1,653. Uh, I mentioned the permeable lots. We would go, uh, what's allowed is up to 30 or more than 30%, we were at 36.8. Uh, and then we would meet all the front yard, a side yard, and rear yard, which is one-third of the lot. So we would, we would meet all of those requirements under the, under the new code. Uh, and so as I had mentioned, my client really worked, uh, with the, with the civic association as well, uh, as the neighbors from our meetings, uh, to try to, uh, meet this new code. Next to us, just so, uh, and you saw it in the site pictures, there's a, a mix of housing stock. There's a number of threes. Directly next to us is multifamily residential, six-unit with commercial, uh, on the first floor. We feel that this project is really going to clean up this site, which is predominantly two structures, very dated. The back one's abandoned. It's a two-story blocks, the view from the neighbor and the rear. Uh, and so with that, I, I can pause to answer any questions. This is cool.
Thank you. Questions from the board?
Madam Chair, the only feedback I have is that you are providing two side... is that you are providing two side elevations without any openings. And the buildings abutting the property all have window elevations. So, you know, that would be my feedback, that you provide some openings, because, you know, no matter how narrow the slots are all along the street, you have windows on all side elevations of the residential structures. That's my only feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't know if maybe Paul, who's on the call, he's the architect, could just respond to that? I don't know, Madam Ambassador, if you see Paul McNally, I believe he might have wrote to be a parent.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know if he needs to respond.
Okay.
Because on the plans, you have adequate space to put windows up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Make that.
Thank you. Other questions from the Board?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes, Attorney Drago, thank you. Could you just explain what makes this site such that it cannot comply with an EBR3 development?
So the only area that we couldn't make work was the unit count, which would be three, and we're proposing four?
Couldn't, and what are the reasons that that doesn't work under the zoning code?
So it's only allowed, are you asking me why we can't comply with that?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand. If we have a new EBR3, and what can't be complied with is the unit count. So try and understand why that's the case.
So this was filed long before the EBR3 had come into effect. So in this particular area, it was a 3F2,000 when we filed it, for over 6,000 square feet. When we first presented, we were at seven units, which we felt six would be reasonable in a 3F2,000. We added an additional unit to make that affordable. But then everything sort of changed aft, long after we had filed to now become this EBR3. And that's when we started to redesign the project. But we're at the bare minimum at where we're at with the four. We tried to comply with every other area. So we do meet every area of the dimensional regs under the new code.
It sounds like what you're saying is that it's financially feasible at four?
Correct, correct.
Okay, without saying it, that's what I'm hearing.
Barely financially feasible, but yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions from the Board? Hearing none? Can I have public testimony?
I don't know how many members of the Board in the first grade we know about neighborhood services. I always have a host and buddy meeting in the 2020s, so we can get three.
Mr. Green, you're a little bit hard to hear.
No, it's better.
Not much. One moment.
Let's get off of it.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, better?
Right, perfect.
All right. So, Chris Green, Office of Neighborhood Services. It wasn't a borough meeting last year. The applicant has worked with the Eagle Hill Neighborhood Association meeting multiple times over 2023 and 2024. The last update we have is a vote of opposition from that Civic. We have six in support, eleven opposed. Would like to just defer judgment.
And Mr. Green, is that with the four-unit count or with the previous version of six?
I believe it's the most recent.
Okay, thank you.
Crystal, on the board? Hi there, I'm Crystal Zala here. I am part of the neighborhood. I live on 101 Condor Street. So I am just advocating for it. I am in strong approval of it. I do think four units is totally fine there. I believe the current building and the garage behind it is in desperate need of a complete overhaul. And this design fits within the rest of the neighborhood. There's nothing I see in opposition of putting new construction there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Margot King, on the board?
Yes. I'm Margot King. My family and I live in Eagle Hill on 213 East Eagle Street. Just wanted to voice my support for this project. Think it would be great to have some more family-friendly housing in the neighborhood. And like the previous speaker said, I think that fits with the design of the space and really would put, make the space more useful and more green for the neighborhood, which would be a win for us. So just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Paul?
Hi, yes, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am also raising my hand in support for this. I live on Condor Street as well. I currently work for the city and am in a position where I have a residency requirement. And coming to see, you know, a lot of younger men and women getting on the same job I do, having more units available to them in their neighborhoods that they're working in, I think creates a better sense of community. And if we can replace rundown buildings and abandoned garages with homes for families and additional parking, I am all for it. Thank you.
Elaine?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, Elaine Donovan, with Counselor Collette Zapata's office. The Counselor, due to community opposition, would like to go on record in opposition at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Board? Hearing none? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would prefer a motion. Would you like me to combine the building code violation as well?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to put a motion forward of approval with a proviso that the project includes a window on both side elevations and also to approve the building code relief to allow for the roof hatch.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes, I think it's a reasonable compromise given this transition period between zoning codes. So yes.
Chair also votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Next, we go to case BOA 1527595 with the address of 135 Harve Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would it please explain to the Board?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Stenbridge. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, again, Jeff Drago with Drago in Tuscana with the business address of 11th Beacon Street, here on behalf of the applicants and my client Kurt and Jody Chisholm. I also have Arthur Chu, who's on as the architect on the proposal for 135 Harve Street. Again, this was a project similar that was filed about a year and a half ago, prior to the new code being updated. What you're looking at in this rendering is a recessed addition of a fourth-floor unit. My clients live on the third-floor condo, had rights to build on the roof and had, have a growing family. So they have a unit right now, Unit 3, which is about 480 square feet. It's a one-bedroom. They've lived there since 2019. They've had the rights with the condo documents to expand. Again, they wanted to expand to move their mother-in-law, Mr. Chisholm's mother-in-law, for childcare. They also have a new child on the way. So they have a family now with four folks, plus their mother-in-law. So they wanted to build an additional unit on top. It would have, so she would have her own kitchen, bathroom, and they would have more space. This particular zone is zoned as an EBR4. If we go to the next, EBR3, I'm sorry. If we go to the next slide. But just so the Board understands, when going through the process, we were assuming this was going to be an EBR4. It is surrounded by EBR4. Two buildings down in 2021, this was approved for a fourth unit on that building. There is the Power Street Community Center, which is higher than their building and directly in the back. And you can see where it suddenly breaks to an EBR4. So the red dot highlighted is their existing building. Right at the corner of that street, everything changes to EBR4. Across the street is the tunnel. So there's no housing directly across the street, and that's an MU5. Along Chelsea Street is an EBR4 as well. So it's really just these, and then the tunnel building, the fast-transit building is right at the corner. It's really just these six buildings that fall within the EBR3, two of which that are four-story structures already. And then some in the back, and then a few as you go down the other direction. But everything around us is EBR4, for the most part, and MU5. If you could go to the next slide, please. We were cited under the old code. So because of when we filed, and this is just shows you where the EBR4s are located and the OS recreational behind us in and around this area. So the, just to go over the layout. So the first three units remain the same. Obviously, those are existing condominium units. The top floor would be the additional unit, and that would be a 537-square-foot one-bedroom. If you go to the next slide, Madam Ambassador. And this just shows you right here so where the red building is, where the Power Street building is behind us. You can see the four-story at 120 Harve that was approved. As you go down the block, there's mixed use. So there's a six-unit building two down from that, the health center building, and then everything is vacant across the street that leads the tunnel directly across from their building. To the left of them is the tunnel building. And then we go right into the EBR4 district. But this would be that top-floor unit. So since we deferred, we actually, just to reduce massing, we've cut the building five feet and pulled it similar to the building a few down from us. So we pulled in, which made the unit smaller by five feet. And then we also removed the roof decks just because of the height change in the EBR3. We didn't want to add any additional height, even though they were hoping to get a roof deck on top. And so with that, I know we worked diligently with Maverick Central. They supported the project. And all of our neighbors, including the other folks that own a condo building. And I know there's some folks on here that will be speaking on their behalf. But with that, I can pause and answer questions.
Thank you. Questions from the Board?
Yes, Mr. Drago. Is this going to be considered an ADU, additional dwelling unit? Or is this going to be a separate independent condominium?
This would be a, it would be a separate unit within the condominium building, correct, as proposed. And again, when we started this, the code hadn't changed yet. They were looking to move their mother-in-law in. We actually had the going out to the front of the building, including that five feet, just because of the area around us. We also were under the impression this would likely be an EBR4. We were kind of surprised when this became an EBR3. But to answer your question, Mr. Valencia, this would be a separate unit.
And you are not increasing or decreasing front yard or rear backyard, right?
So the only thing we are required to add is a second egress in the back. So it's, it's shown in the plans, but that's it. We're not adding any building mass in the rear. We're not changing the contours of the building on either side or frontage. It would just be to fill in the top-floor space, which they had, which they were allowed to under their condominium guy.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions from the Board? Hearing none? Can I have public testimony?
Hello, Madam Chair. Hope you can hear me. And members of the Board, this is Chris Green from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I can confirm that Neighborhood Services did host a borough meeting, of which there were, there was no one on the call. We also received no letters. The applicant did meet with Maverick Central Neighborhood Association, worked with them diligently. And that group did vote to support this project. We defer judgment at this time. Thank you.
Chris?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman and members of the Board. Christian Seminale, Boston Row and Trust. And we have both G Card letters from the app.
We have no additional base dance.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board? With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I think this is a similar project to the case that we just saw before. There is a transition between the zoning code. And with that, I think the project accomplishes most of the requirements for this area. And I make a motion of approval with review from the planning department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
I'm going to vote no because I actually think it's a little bit different than the other last project we saw. I find that the proposal really takes up a lot of open space, usable open space. And for that reason, I'm going to say no.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
I'll have to vote no. It is quite different than some of the other transitional cases. I understand the applicant's specific needs for themselves. And we have to keep in mind that these units may sold and become others. And the EBR3 reflects a three-story building here, not a four-story. So no.
Thank you. The Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, members of the Board.
Next, we have two companion cases. First being case BOA 1562179 with the address of 75 Fulton Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1566503 also with the address of 75 Fulton Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain the case to the Board, please?
I can take a moment. Oh, yeah, we can hear you now. Go ahead.
Great. Hi, this is Pete VanderWaal. I'm representing the homeowners at 75 Fulton Street, to the north end. And I did just send a PowerPoint, a PDF of our PowerPoint slides earlier at about 10 past 12. Would you be able to pull that up on email?
No, we just have to go through the slides that we currently have.
Okay, well, happy to do that. We had an updated presentation. I might have administratively fumbled getting you guys the new slides the right way. But happy to have a hearing. And then if there's more information after this, we can carry on. Oh, that's it. Oh, this is much better. This tells the story a lot better, which we went in front of you with the last presentation before. And I think you guys came away needing more information to understand the layout of the building and the details of the project. So I tried to clarify everything with this slide deck right here. So I tried to clarify everything with this slide deck right here. So this is 75 Fulton Street. This is our second hearing with you guys. This is for a, not a common roof deck, but the, there's two units on the top floor. One of the units has an old roof deck that you can see on the top right of that first slide. That's my client's neighbor. There's two units on the sixth floor. They are on the left side, as we look at this picture, and they're proposing to build an exclusive use deck. The condo docs provide both those top floor units with exclusive rights to each side of the combined building. My clients have the left side, which is currently empty, and there's never been a deck there. So this is the front of the building for perspective. And then you can go to the next slide. So this is the lobby of the building. This is typical of each lobby section. So you have the previous party wall before they combined the two buildings when they conduit it out in the 80s. There's the elevator shaft and the common staircase to the left, which is the same detail throughout. Just wanted to give you kind of a circulation idea about the building. Next slide. Okay, so this is the top floor, sixth floor. So you see a few pictures here. The picture on the far right is the unit owner, my client. The staircase directly to the right of my unit owner's entry is the one that accesses the roof. Now, one of the reasons why the zoning violations occurred is because there is not a private means of access to the roof. Technically, anybody in the, in the building, even though, you know, it's exclusive use to my owner, technically, any of, anyone in the building can get up to that roof area from the common stairwell. So it triggers a bunch of additional life safety codes that make it a little more challenging to do it as a right roof deck for my client. The picture in the middle is just a straight-on that goes up to the headhouse and accesses the roof. Picture on the left is the other tenant on the sixth floor, just for reference of the layout of the floor. Now we can go up to the roof. So these are two perspectives of the roof. The one on the left is from basically where the roof deck would go, which is in the rear back corner of the building. And we have a, we have a plan view following this that you guys can look at. But basically, the picture on the left, I'm standing where the roof deck would be, and then that's looking out towards the front of the building. And then the picture on the right, you can now see the headhouse, the back of the headhouse on the right, and that's from the front edge of the building, looking back to the corner of where that roof deck would be situated. And this is all the left side of the building. If you're, if you're standing in front of the building, this is my owner's side of the roof. Okay, next slide. Okay, so now we have a proposed planet roof. The bottom of this page is Fulton Street, and you can see we have a proposed deck, 12 by 21, where you would pop out from the headhouse, and there would be a pad walkway over to the proposed deck. And then, one of the issues with the code, which we brought over here today, is that although you can easily walk over to the buildings on either side in the event of a life safety event, they don't consider that a second means of egress. There is an existing fire escape that's on the back of the building that stops at the top floor. So part of the project would be having a diagonal staircase that would transition out directly from the deck down onto that fire balcony, which allows legal access and complies as a second means of egress. Any change to a fire escape triggers code issues as well. So I think those are the basic summary of why, you know, we're here today and the outline of the project. So, any questions?
Are there questions from the board?
Is there any way that you can access the proposed roof deck from inside the unit?
There is not. We did look at that and do the layout of the unit. It's really not that big. Essentially, there's, it's two rooms. One is the master bedroom, which is pretty much covered wall-to-wall with dressers and bed and that type of stuff, and closets. And then there's a kitchen area that sort of extends into living room, which is a no-fly zone. And then there's just not much room to, you definitely couldn't fit a staircase in pretty much anywhere without destroying the, you know, the layout of the unit and making a lot of hardship for that. But we did look at that with the architect, and it was just, it was too tight.
Okay.
Thank you. May I have public testimony?
I'm sorry, one more thing I would just like to add. We did get a public hearing, and there were zero attendees, zero.
So Mr. Breen, Mr. Breen will speak to that. Thank you.
Thanks. Hey, 75 Fulton Street. Madam Chair, members of the board, Chris Breen from the Office of Neighborhood Services. We are deferring to the board. The applicant has completed their community process, though. We did have an rebutrers meeting on January 30th, and we also sent them to two civics, Nura and Newark, both of which expressed support for this project, although Newark wrote a letter of no objection. We do defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands? Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, sorry, I lost my, my notes. I'm going to, here it is, my notes. I'm going to recommend, I'm going to put forward a motion of denial. I'm going to recommend that the applicant goes in front of the State Building Court, Building Code of Appeals Board, to request a violation from that building code in regards to the second means of egress. That, that's my motion, and if it, if it passes, I just would recommend that you could explore looking at doing an internal spiral stair to get access to the roof deck, but at least you have two ways of getting out.
Is there a second?
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberg?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brasa?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Since it is now 11:05, we'll ask if there are any withdrawals and deferrals from the one block hearings.
Hello, Mr. Secretary, this is Mike Ross, the property at 226 Magnolia Street, please.
That's the last case.
So, attorney Ross, that would be case BOA 1526691 with the address of 226 Magnolia Street. Would you be here to explain?
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the board. We are working with Council Orwell's office. We also took the BPDA comments to heart, which were mostly positive, but had one area that recommended, that we think could be helpful for this. And for that reason, we find reason to give it one more shot. We've been at this for a long time, but try to work out some of those final issues and come back to the board, you know, with a project that has, you know, a little more support after all these years.
Thank you. What timeframe are you, is available, Calvin?
The applicant would love to come back as soon as possible as well, just a matter of.
So the options are August 13th, August 27th, September 10th, September 24th.
August 13th would be ideal, if that's available, Madam Chairman.
With that, may I have a motion?
I'm making a motion to defer to August 13th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberg?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brasa?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you so much.
Can you further request for withdrawals and deferrals from the 1:00 PM time frame?
1:90, our Parrish Street, Mr. Secretary?
You're gonna make the confusion, right?
So that would be case BOA 1588133 with the address of 190, 190 Harv, Harv Parrish Street. Would you be here to explain?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Nichols with Fletcher Tilton on behalf of the applicant. We did submit some updated plans about a week ago and do anticipate that this will have to be re-advertised. So at this point, we are requesting a deferral.
Okay. Of those dates you heard earlier, any work better or worse?
If it works for the board, I would suggest the first hearing in September.
Okay, so what date? September 10th?
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to defer until September 10th, 2024?
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberg?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brasa?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
With that, hearing no further requests, we'll return to the next case from 11:30, which would be case BOA 1576209 with the address of 4 to 6 East Springfield Street. The applicant and/or their representative are present. If they please explain the case to the board.
Yes. Hi, members of the board, chairman. This is Greg McCarthy for 4 to 6 East Springfield Street. We have an existing building on East Springfield that is currently four units. It's an old building that's been through some renovations in the past, but still needs a pretty good overhaul. The, kind of the synopsis of the project is we're proposing to add two additional units. The construction portion of the project, proposal of the project has changed significantly over our past few months, beginning with the community, with the Southland Landmarks Committee. Our initial proposal was a five-story building. We're adding about 2,000 square feet on top. If we build a slide A102, the one that we're just on, right above there, right above this one, in the other direction, I can kind of outline the addition that we're proposing. So this is the existing building now. It's a three-story building. The fourth story of the building is about 650 square feet or so. Our initial proposal was to fill in the entire fourth story and then do a fifth story that is about 1,100 square feet. The building is very old. It was originally forested. It's a very cool building. It's a pretty deep building. So after some conversations with landmarks, initial conversations, we don't have any kind of approvals on this yet. We still need to go before that with the proposal. The initial proposal was, was not well-received. They thought it was too far of a change from the initial building. So we scaled down the proposed addition significantly to about 450 square feet. So if you're, it's easier to see how this plan is basically carrying the addition all the way over, so filling in like the eight feet on the side, and then it's bringing it forward about six feet as well. So just extending the existing fourth story in either direction. The deck, right now, there's a deck on the, on the fourth story as well, which faces East Springfield, which will be removed and replaced with a roof deck on the fourth story, which I can show you as we, as we go down the slides. If you want to keep going down, please. Thank you. So that just shows the first floor units. They're just, these are existing five-level, two-bedroom. These are actually the new, this was, the second floor was one unit. And what we're doing is putting a firewall back in. It used to be split to two buildings. Right now, there's a steel beam in between 4 and 6 East Springfield, so we're placing that, giving the building a little townhouse feel with one unit on either side on the, on the second floor. This shows the penthouse level, which would be where the addition is. So you have like an additional 450 square feet on the fourth floor, and then private roof decks for the two top floor units, which are set back a little bit further from the, from the rear yard setback than the building that tend to be behind. So our violations are parking. We would be requiring to provide 1.4 parking spots for the additional two units. We have a violation for floor area ratio. The existing building was not conforming, and by adding any additional square footage, we would be furthering that non-conformity. And the minimum rear yard setback for the portion of the addition is in the rear yard.
Okay. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none? I'm gonna go with public testimony.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christopher Breen from the Office of Neighborhood Services. We are deferring to the board, but the applicant, the applicant has completed their community process with us. We had an rebutrers meeting on March 27th, and they have also presented in front of the local civic, I believe the Worcester Square Neighborhood Association, although there was no vote attached to them. Our office only received one major concern regarding the modifications to the historic street facade on the first and second floors and the existing fourth floor addition being pulled forward to the street along with, you know, questions regarding parking and window placement and shadows. We do defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Liam Remus from Council Fitzgerald's office. Our office would like to be on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands.
Okay. Any, any questions from the board? Hearing none? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with a proviso that the project undergoes. The planning department does on review, and to have the planning department kind of work with the applicant on the setback of the addition and to ensure that the roof deck is not visible.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stemberg?
Yeah.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bede Brasa?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next, we have three companion cases, which are all in conjunction with the Mayor's Office of Housing. First, we have this case BOA 1596026, the address of 104 Norwell Street. Next, we have case BOA 1596032 with the address of 106 Norwell Street. Along with those, we have case BOA 1596034 with the address of 108 Norwell Street. Would the applicant and/or their representative describe the cases to the board?
Hello, Madam Chair, members. My name is Jennifer Ha from Dorchester Design Collaborative, located at 53H Harvard Street in Dorchester. As part of the Welcome Home Boston Phase One Initiative by the city, we are the MOH-designated developer for parcels 104, 106, and 108 Norwell Street. Our proposal will create 12 B-restricted condominium units for buyers making between 80% to 100% AMI. The architect, Matt Mueller from Hugh Architecture, is here today to present the design.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Matt Mueller from Hugh Architecture, located at 53H Harvard Street in Dorchester. So first off, I would like to start off by saying these are three identical buildings. Each of them will be passive house certifiable, and we plan to reinstall solar panels on the roofs to provide cheap energy for the future residents of this, of this development. You can see it's a modern cable design, but the massing and the form of the building does mirror. does mirror neighborhood buildings on the same street. If you'll go to the next page, please. It is three current lots. One lot, a city-owned, has an old garage, center of our garage. We do plan to demolish that. Currently go through Article 85 to try to remove it to Article 85 to do that. And we do plan to combine the lots into one lot for condominium purposes for the future use. Next, please. This is the proposed site layout. We have two parking spaces for, two ADA accessible parking spaces for each unit, except for the one on the far right. Each building, I'm sorry. The one on the far right has two tandem parking spaces that are not ADA accessible. Next slide, please. Just a brief touch on the landscape. The rear of the lots will be combined into a long landscape area that has somewhat different zones for different kinds of activities, which will be usable for all residents of this development. Next slide, please. You can keep going. I feel to get the plans and touch on the plans really quick. We are just showing building code compliant here with the slide. The first floor unit on each building is group two ADA accessible. MOH requires one group two compliant unit across all the buildings, but we're providing three across all the buildings. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. We have a small basement for mechanical. As I stated previously, the first floor unit in each building is group two A accessible. It's three bedrooms, two baths, excuse me, one and a half bath with a bathtub laundry. Next slide, please. The second floor of each building has a studio and a two-bedroom unit. And the third floor is a three-bedroom, two-bath unit. Next slide, please. The driving force of our facade design is again keeping the massing and the height and the form similar to other things on the street. But we've optimized the roof slope to our solar array, which we plan to provide for each building.
There's ADA accessible.
Of course, we have ADA accessible right on the front as well. Next slide, please. Yeah, I think in terms of materials, we're going with a higher-end natural wood material on the front and with the standing c-metal roof for durability. And the materials on the side are going to be a fiber cement or composite wood material for, you know, for increased durability as well. And I think that wraps up most of the architectural elements. Anybody has any questions? I'll be happy to answer.
Great. Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, I'll take public testimony.
Good morning, Madam Chair, or afternoon rather, and members of the board. My name is I am Dale Weewell, the Office of City Council, Brian Orwell. And as you said, we're the civil and all age project. I'd suggest the council that offers full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Joyce Harvey, will you look at your testimony here?
Yes, I'd like to make a statement.
Sure, can we state your name and address? If we can tell who's here, so far, I'll get the question.
I would gladly do that. My name is Joyce Harvey. I live at 106, or 106 Radcliffe Street in Dorchester. It's a block behind the parcels at 104, 104 to 108 Norwell Street. I am in support of this project. One, because it removes an eyesore that is currently there. And two, we need more housing in our neighborhood. And in all my dealings with Hugh Architecture, I have found that to be very good and beneficial to the neighborhood, willing to hear and take input from the neighbors and neighborhood and make changes as necessary. I am in full support of it and I believe my neighborhood association is also in support of this. Thank you, Madam Chair and Board.
Hey, boy, can you guys hear me or no?
Yes, sir.
Sorry, this is Chris Breen from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Running out of laptops that function. So our office can confirm that the proponent has met multiple times with the Harvard-Washington Normal Neighborhood Association from late February to late June of this year. The civic has expressed their support for this project and they have completed our community process along with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Housing and we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
You have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Okay, without may I have a motion?
I do have comment.
Sorry.
No, this is, sorry, I do have a public comment. This is Antonio Lash from the Mayor's Office of Housing.
Please.
My apologies. Hi, hello, good afternoon. My name is Antonio Lash. I am a senior housing development officer with the Mayor's Office of Housing. This project involves a disposition of city-owned land associated with the Welcome Home Boston program, which is an initiative to develop affordable homeownership in the city of Boston. MOH has been working with Dorchester Design Collaborative since the tentative designation for these sites. The project has gone through extensive community process and has the support of the Mayor's Office of Housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no additional.
Without may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yep.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bederbraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board.
Next, we have case BOA 1510209 with the address of 15 West Tremlett Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is available, would they explain the case to the board?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good afternoon. Andrew Litchfield at East 67 Washington Street in Dorchester, presenting on behalf of the owner, James Adams, who's a lifelong resident of Dorchester, looking to move his family back into the area. I'm here with my architect, Eric Zacherson, and we're here to present the project at 15 West Tremlett Street. Currently, it's a single family. We are proposing a three-family with five parking spaces with an additional tandem spot on the right-hand side, as you can see. The units will be, will consist of three three-bedroom, two-bathroom units. The first floor will be about 1450 square feet, second floor 1,260 square feet, and third floor 1,275 square feet. We met with the Neighborhood Association and a butters meeting and the WOW Coalition. Everyone seemed to like the project. It fits in with the neighborhood. And as I mentioned, the owner, James, we'll be moving him and his uncle and his son back into the neighborhood. He had a fire at his other property in Dorchester. So just helping along with this process. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Question, yes. Have you talked to the Boston Transportation Department? Their recommendation is about for the project to remove two parking spaces and keep a maximum of four parking spaces. Do you have any conversations with Transportation Department about that?
We have not yet, but it's something we're open to from the neighborhood meetings and the butters. They definitely called for more parking spaces, but we totally understand where the city is coming from and it's something that we're open to.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, Chris Breen from the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed our community process, having had an butters meeting, having met with the West of Washington Civic Group on April 17th, 2024. The civic has expressed their support for this project and would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Apologies.
Oh, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. You're a member. My name is I from the Office of City Council, Brian Orwell. And as I stated previously, there was one letter from the budding civic, Western Washington Coalition, and with that, the council would also like to also give the support for the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands.
Without may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with two provisos. The first one is that following the Boston Transportation Department's recommendation for the proponent to reduce parking count from six to four, improve parking configuration, and increase usable open space.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yep.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bederbraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Now we will move on to the hearing schedule for 1:00. With the first case referred, takes to case BOA 1486245 with the address of 1260 Boilson Street. It's the applicant and/or their representative present. Would they explain the case to the board?
Hi, if you're on to this proposal, can you raise your hand? Okay, let's see if this hand just popped up. This Kelly Casey, will you look at this for project? Will you be speaking on behalf of this project?
Yes, I'll be speaking on behalf of this. Sorry, there was another member that was supposed to attend. I'm just here for backup. Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the board. I'll be representing that property.
Okay, can you proceed?
Yes, this is an immersive game recreation space that we're looking to get approval on. We previously received zoning denial for the use of gaming machines, but we've, I think it's not gaming machines. It's immersive entertainment is what it is. And we're just looking for approval, for zoning approval.
Any questions from the board? Okay, hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Siggy Johnson with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This proponent completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted in a butters meeting on October 3rd, 2023, where no concerns were raised. The Fenway Civic Association has sent our office a letter of support. The Fenway Civic Association has additionally requested a proviso that the relief be granted to this petitioner only. With that, we defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. You've muted yourself.
So sorry. My name is Lily Sweeterman with Council Sharon Durkin's office. And at this time, I'd like to read a statement on her behalf. Says dear Chair Dong and members of the board, as the District Eight City Council representing the Fenway neighborhood, I am writing in support of the applicant at 1260 Boilson Street to install an immersive game box at their location. It is my belief that this amenity and entertainment concept where customers play in interactive smart rooms is a great use of space in a large apartment building aimed at fostering community and provides both residents and visitors an exciting alcohol-free activity. The Neighborhood Civic Association, the Fenway Civic Association, is in support of this application. With neighborhood support, I believe this addition, which comes alongside the introduction of Dave's Hot Chicken and the Hual Guys, will bring the Fenway neighborhood diverse dining options and an opportunity to experience fun for all ages, all within the same building. For these reasons, I would like to go on record in support of this application. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. No additional raised hands at the moment.
Without may I have a motion?
I would put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
I have a second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yep.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bederbraza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes, I'd just like to clarify, was intentional to leave out the, was intentional to leave out that this petitioner only request? Just want to make sure. Ms. Weewell?
I'm fine without that proviso.
I just wanted to make sure that was vetted here.
Is there a concern or are you proposing to add that proviso, Mr. Aiken?
It was requested. So I'm just making sure we didn't drop the request.
Sounds like Ms. Weewell did not, or consciously did not include it. So is your vote?
I think for me, it's just we always hear back from them in a year to remove it. So I would rather kind of cut out that administrative burden. I didn't see it in the planning department recommendation, but maybe I missed it. But it's just a straight approval recommendation.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was clear. So it's yes to Ms. Weewell's motion.
Okay, thank you. The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA 1613298, which is an Article 80 case with the address of 2H Street. The applicant and/or their representative present. Would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, sir, Attorney Joe Hanley, as well as the applicant.
Please proceed.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Joe Hanley McDermott, Quilty Miller and Hanley, 28 State Street in Boston. I am here with the owner and proponent, Mr. Peter Zagoryianakis from Triad Development. I'm going to take you through the beginning of the presentation very briefly and ask Mr. Zagoryianakis to run through the plans for you. So next slide, please. As Mr. Secretary had indicated, this is an Article 80-approved large project that is located in the Gate of Heaven section of South Boston. You'll see it within, in the photograph, the aerial view here within the orange hash. It's about a little over 66,000 square feet of industrial land. And what is unique about this site, it is bounded on all sides by the right-of-way's of East First Street, Vicksburg Street to its side, H Street, and East Second Street. There is also a 12-foot grade change going up from East First to East Second Street. Next slide, please. So these show you the conditions on the upper left along East Second Street. I said on, I should say on East Second Street and then along H Street going down towards First Street, which is, goes down in grade and then if you're looking up from East First Street. This is a underutilized vacant industrial site that has, is now in the multifamily residential sub-district within Article 68 of the zoning code. Next slide. So Article 60, you'll see it within the zoning map. Again, within the pink and orange is our site. Next slide, please. Article 68 was adopted by the city in 2011. And this project, this very same project that we're presenting to you today was approved by the BRA or the BPDA, then BRA, on July 12th, 2012, as a project that would comply with all the requirements of Article 68. Since that time, Since that time, two thousand and sixteen, Article sixty-eight was revised to remove the NDA overlay and make some changes to it. And due to the lapse of time between the approval of the BPDA in two thousand and twelve, and picking it back up, we were asked by the BPDA to file a notice of project change. What's important is this notice of project change did not change any of the two thousand and twelve-approved dimensions, scale, or scope, or uses of this project. It merely added, voluntarily added, so that we could get our certificate and proceed now, and address the lapse of time, it merely added sixteen units of income-restricted IDP units. As you know, and as of right, development does not, until, at least until October, this development did not require any, as was originally approved, as of right before the lapse of time. Then the project, the project otherwise exactly the same, two thousand and twelve, we proceeded with the BPDA in twenty-three to file that notice of project change, again, to make the project approvals current, and add those affordable units within the same structure. That was approved, our NPC was approved by the BPDA in Maine, included a public meeting in April of twenty-three as well. And we have since been issued the certificate of appliance under Article eighty, and a building permit was issued for the current construction of the project, ISD, which has its jurisdiction to do this, then reinterpreted the, of the project, the BPDA's approval, and because there wasn't an app, building permit application filed in two thousand and twelve, even though it was approved and recommended as, as of right under that zoning, ISD cited us for requiring to comply with the updated requirements of Article sixty-eight. And they are, and you'll see them in the refusal letter, local retail use, which is now forbidden, it's allowed in the NDA in two thousand and twelve. It's about twenty-nine hundred square feet of retail along First Street, and it's meant to activate the First Street corridor. That was both scoped and processed through the Article eighty process, and we received no opposition to that retail use throughout the years as well. One of the new requirements in Article sixty-eight is a visibility around the corner. As I mentioned, there are actually four corners here, but most prevalent was the corner of East First, East Second, and H Street. And so you'll see in the design, as part of the Article eighty, large projects, pilping, and site review, which is the purpose of that recommendation, that we engaged with BTB, transportation, to site the building in a way that would address the traffic visibility at the corners. Building height excessive, zoning requires forty, that hasn't changed. Our average height is forty, but as I mentioned, there is a grade change, and ISD was looking at this as the height from East First and the height from East Second were about forty-four feet on one side and thirty-four feet on the other side, so if you average it out, we're compliant. And then the additional lot area, the number of units, one hundred and twenty-seven units on a lot of a little over sixty-six thousand square feet. Next slide, please. So you'll see the refusal letter, which I essentially just detailed, was just issued in June, and you'll see the zoning chart, which I've gone through as well for the relief. I think what's important here, too, as you'll see, is FAR is compliant, open space. And again, this is, is the very same project that had been processed for years and was approved in two thousand and twelve, and merely allows the city to now get sixteen units of great affordable housing. Next slide, please. So I'd like to ask Peter to just take you quickly through the plans. Peter?
Thank, thank you, board, for hearing us. Let me just quickly bring you through. So the purple outlined items are on East First Street, that's our two retail locations. You have a lobby and elevator along East First Street, as well as a hundred and fifty-two parking spaces, which is about one point two parking spaces per unit. Next slide, please. We tend to do, we have a good mix of one-twos and threes. In our buildings, we tend to do a little larger size units. So our average size in this building, I believe, is about nine hundred and forty square feet. We don't tend to do a lot of studios. This is the first-floor layout. It's really a three-story building from Second Street, and the only reason it's four-story along East First Street is because we have a grade change of twelve feet. We've got a courtyard in the front along East Second Street, a courtyard in the middle of the building, and then we have another lobby area entrance along East Second Street. Next slide, please. This is the second-floor layout. We have an open area along East Second, First Street, which is a courtyard that gives the building a Q effect, instead of just an O effect. Next slide, please. This is our third story of the building. Next slide, please. We have a green roof and solar array on the roof. We are passive house certified right now. We're an all-electric building, except for the emergency generator that we have on the building. We are actually, we can, the building can be net carbon zero by simply signing a contract for renewable energy with N-Star, or Edison, I'm sorry, Edison, for the supply of the, of the tenants, which we will do before we lease it up, and that will basically make this a net carbon-zero building. The next slide, please. These are a couple renderings. This is the roof line from, looking at it from East Second Street, towards the seaport. Next slide, please. And this is the front along East Second Street. Materials we're using are all brick and standing seam siding. We don't like maintenance on our buildings. This will make the exterior of this building maintenance-free for the next thirty years, other than sealing the brick every ten years or so. Next slide, please. This is a view from the corner of H and First Street. You can see the fourth story, and you can see the retail activation that, the retail activation was actually an imminent part of the rezoning back in two thousand and eleven. They wanted First Street corridor to be a retail corridor with, with retail activity along the street front, and that's when the building was designed, was during that process. Next slide, please. This is a view from, from the other side of the building, along East First Street. Next slide, please. And this is the view from, from H and Second Street. Next slide, please. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Questions from the board? Okay, here are no questions, is there public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christopher Breen from the Office of Neighborhood Services. As stated, two H Street has garnered community awareness due to the fact it's currently under construction, and has gone through a process prior to the assignment of the updated zoning code violations presented here. The proponent's attorney and team recently have coordinated with representative community members from the Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association and the Friends of the North of Broadway to explain facets of this project. Gate of Heaven Neighborhood Association is adopting a neutral stance on zoning relief being sought. The Friends of North of Broadway would like to request a more formal form for a community to weigh in and ask questions in the future. Concern for them was registered with the height, the lot size, the traffic visibility across the corner. There was also a request that the ground-floor retail be transitioned to local services or another approved use. The addition of affordable housing units to the project was well-received. With that, our office is unaware of any additional concerns at this time, and would like to defer judgment to the.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Laura Tullidano here from Council Flynn's office. At this time, I would like to read the letter of support that we wrote. Dear members of the zoning board of appeal, I'm writing in support of the project at two H Street, which would construct a residential building with one hundred and twenty-seven residential rental units, including sixteen income-restricted units. It will also include more than two thousand and nine hundred square feet of retail space. This development will have one fifty, one hundred and fifty-two parking spaces as well. This development was approved previously in two thousand and twelve, and it has received community feedback at several meetings, and has worked with neighbors to improve their proposal. This project will also provide much-needed housing, especially affordable housing, or city and neighborhood retail space. Will also be welcome addition to the neighborhood. I hope that the CVA will provide every consideration to this proposal. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me at ed.flynn@boston.gov or six one seven six three five three two zero three. Thank you.
Thanks. Minor?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Minor Perez, representing Conners Union Carpenters, the neighborhood of Boston. We want to go on reference for the prior.
Thank you.
Do we have Michael Sinatra?
All right, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Michael Sinatra, I am the development review on business with the planning department. I was the project manager at the time of those project change. We want to continue to lend our strong support for this project.
Thank you. Put the city back. May I have more to show you?
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, make a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair?
Madam Chair?
I'm sorry? Could we add that the proviso regarding affordable housing?
For what, the MOH, MOH agreement?
Yes.
Okay, can Mr. Valencia?
Yes. Let's see, let me see if I remember. So make a motion of approval with BPDA review and with the proviso that the proponent entered into a housing agreement with the Office of Planning for the sixteen affordable units that they are proposing.
Is there a second? Is that?
Sorry.
Okay. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Bedebrazza?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, everybody, have a great day. Next, we have another mayor office, Article eighty case, which is case BOA, one six zero four nine nine five, with the address of three seventy-six to three eighty-four A Blue Avenue.
So before the applicant proceeds, I'm just going to say that one of our board members may need to drop off in the next twenty minutes, so timeliness would be great. Thank you.
So with that, if they, so if, if that, with that, the applicant and where they're represented will proceed, we would appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Secretary. Thank you for that admonition there, Ms. Dong, after following my good friend Joe Hanley. I will definitely be more brief than my good friend Joe Hanley.
Thank you.
I, I represent the applicant to this MTK Development. It's always a pleasure to see you and the members of the board. I don't get here as often as I used to in the past, but I always welcome the opportunity when I do have an opportunity to appear. I'm here representing MTK Development. The principals involved with that are Wadi Muhammad, Malik Aziz, Jared Harrell, and with me is paralegal in my office, Trish Flanagan, as well as Chantel Burley, who is a law student, because we want all of them to see the great work of the Board of Appeals, and that's what we do here at the firm of Dane Torby. I didn't announce where my address, I'm at the law firm of Dane Torby, with one seventy-five Federal Street in Boston. I see that the ambassador has gotten, has allowed Jonathan Garland, who is an architect, to talk about the project, just as a preliminary, I will simply say, this is a project, but it proposing eighteen family-style units of affordable homeownership condominium units, which will be comprised of one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, and three-bedroom units, two thousand square-foot ground-floor commercial retail space, and the thirteen hundred square-foot community event space. As was mentioned by Secretary, Mr. Stenbridge, this is the mayor's office of housing project, which is their Blue Who Avenue, it's called the Blue, Blue Who Avenue Project, and I'm sure that Garland, Mr. Garland will be able to give the accurate or correct name of how that is described, or the mayor's office of housing, Blue Who Avenue Action Plan. They went through an extensive community process. I submitted to the board letters of support during that process before the mayor's office of housing of support, as well as there are persons who are, who will be seeking to testify, Chairman Dong, with regards to the project. But in the interim, and for the sake of time, would ask Mr. Garland to please present the project.
Thank you, Attorney Feaster. Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm Jonathan Garland with Jay Garland Enterprises. Next slide, please. Also, I just got a note that Malik Aziz, he's one of our team members, one of the owners, says that he's available to be a panelist. In the interest of time, I'll sort of read this, but if he can jump on, that would be helpful. This is a bit of a quick narration of the, the history of Marzuk Muhammad, who was a dear brother to Wadi Muhammad. He tragically passed in an accident, a young, young guy, mid-thirties or so, and left behind a wonderful wife and young kid, and so this entire project has been done on his behalf, Marzuk's behalf. Next slide. Wadi, if you're here, feel free to, to jump in. This is the MTK Development team, as Joe, as Attorney Feaster mentioned, Wadi to the left, Jared to the right, Malik, all guys from Boston, local, trying to do some amazing work in the affordable housing space. Next slide. Here's a bit of the snapshot of the site. You can see that our parcel is the top left, or sorry, I'd say bottom left there, where it says three seventy-six, three eighty-four, it's circled in the blue there, and it's a fairly contiguous set of parcels currently, City of Boston-owned parcels, that we would look to consolidate to create this project. Next slide. Here is an early elevational snapshot of the building, which shows, you know, the rendering of the new elevation within the context of the street. There is a slight sloping grade change to the street from the low side being the left, on the left is the low, and then the high is the right. You can see the community retail space, the Marzuk Plaza to the far left at the grade level, and then two levels of red brick masonry and punch windows. And then finally, the fourth story, which is kind of an attic-story condition, where the edge of the wall sets back from what you have below. Next slide. A number of community benefits that have helped to, really helped this project garner community support, and also something that we look forward to in the long run, is the family movement, homelessness to homeownership, that's a potential operator, that would occupy the ground-floor space, and the MTK team has been working hard to partner with them, as well as the Daddy and Me Literacy Program that was founded by Marzuk, the gentleman that's tragically passed away, but his legacy would live on through this, through this initiative. Next slide. Other community benefits, as you can see listed here, the Shea Butter is a possibility as a retail component. We're also looking at rooftop solar and common space at the higher levels of the building. These types of amenities, we think, will increase ownership, wealth opportunities, certainly for the residents, but also provide nice local economic and entrepreneurship opportunities for the retail tenants. Next slide. As far as the programming, as Attorney Feaster mentioned, we are proposing a total of eighteen homeownership, family-style units. These are not compact units, these are very spacious. Three one-bedrooms, nine two-bedrooms, and six three-bedrooms at the ground floor of the building. You can see the retail and community space where footage is. You can see the retail and community space square footage is for a total of just under twenty-six thousand square feet. Next slide. As far as design updates, we have been working very closely with the neighborhood, with the community. This is a four-story building. It does align right along Blue Hill Avenue. We see it as an urban infill project where it fits nicely between existing infrastructure on the left and the right. We are proposing ground floor commercial space, new street tree plantings as part of the Blue Hill Avenue, streetscape, exterior signage, lighting bands to help on the retail signage, flexible community space, roof decks, covered bike storage, which will comply with the Boston Bike Guidelines, open green space both at the roof, as well as in the rear of the property, and off-street parking. Next. Quickly, this is a snapshot about us, the architect. We've just been doing local work in the neighborhood. Next slide. Diversity and inclusion for the project. Next slide. Marketing and outreach. This is just a snapshot of some of the outreach that's been done to date in the community. And MTK will continue to work with the Boston Home Center to ensure that maximum outreach goes to the local community when the units are ready to come online. Next slide. These are just a few of the supporters in the neighborhood. Next slide. And also just letters of support that we've received so far. There's a long list there and it continues to grow. Next slide. Quick snapshot elevation of the building. Next. Next slide. Is that the final slide? Okay. I'll turn it back to the board. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. That concludes our presentations. Thank you, Mr. Garland, for that. And I turn it to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Very quickly, Madam Chair. We usually see that projects published with the Mayor's Office of Housing, building on public land, provide units for eighty percent AMI for the condominiums and a hundred percent AMI or a mix. And I see that all of the units are only providing one hundred percent area minimum income opportunities. So quickly, there is a reason why you couldn't provide units for eighty percent area minimum income, especially if you are thinking about opportunities for formerly homeless individuals, families.
Mr. Valencia, I'm not, I didn't hear all of that, Clay, but I will just respond. Generally, in this particular case, the applicant weren't calling this out with the Mayor's Office of Housing as to what would be the complement for the affordability. So I presume, I presume by the presentation today that the Mayor's Office of Housing is satisfied with the income distributions that are being provided for these particular units. I was not involved in those conversations. And so I, I'm making a presumption, but it's based upon my many years of involvement of working on affordable housing projects. So I would say the answer to your question is that the Mayor's Office of Housing is based upon the cost. Because we have a situation now that is going to be, because of the financial marketplace, the difficulty of bringing affordable housing online is going to be very, very difficult. It also plays into the subsidy that the city can provide. So I think all of that was taken into account and that all parties have been satisfied that this is the best result that we can have for this location.
Giovanni, your questions, your questions are very good. And I wonder if someone from the Mayor of Housing is there to respond? And if not, maybe the the client who's been involved with the financial feasibility with MOH can respond if no one from MOH is there.
All right. If no one from MOH is here, I know Malik Aziz is, is
I think someone is, right? Tiara?
Yes. My name is Tiara. Give me one second, but this is a eighty percent and one hundred percent mixed project.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see that on the memo. I only saw that all of the units were a hundred percent. So maybe it's my mistake. I'm not sure. Sorry.
And I'm sorry, Malik is, I think, trying, he's been trying to join as a panelist, but he's not, I don't know why he's not been able to gain access. I think his hand is raised, though.
It's okay. Are there other questions from the board in the meantime? Okay, well, let's go to public testimony. And if Malik wants to add to that once he gets on, that's great.
Madam Chair and Members of the Board, this is Chris Breen from the Office of Neighborhood Services. The Mayor's Office of Housing has conducted an extensive community process. The only question, comment, or concern that has been raised to our office came following a meeting with Project Wright on October, who had concerns regarding a roof deck and a request for the applicant to come back to the association to discuss the project further. We have not registered any comments since, and we will defer to the board. Thank you.
Counselor, what do I have?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. My name is I have the Office of City Council. I'm a representative of Project Wright. We didn't receive any letters of opposition or support. We did, however, receive a notice that there was an request for bike spaces. I believe eighteen was the maximum units. Other than that, the council suggested go on record and support the project.
Cindy? Good afternoon. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Cindy James. I am here on behalf of Council President, Lucy Lee. And I would also like to go on record and say the counselor would like to support this merger.
Thank you. Tiara?
Hi, my name is Tiara Satchwell. I am a development officer with the Mayor's Office of Housing. I do want to confirm that half of the units are eighty percent AMI and the other half are one hundred percent AMI. And that this project involves the disposition of city-owned lands and has support from the Mayor's Office of Housing. Thank you.
Minor?
Thank you, Madam Ambassador. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, this is Minor Perez, representing Honduras Union Carpenters, the Little World of City of Boston. We want to go on record and support this project, and wish the developer good luck with the project. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Mike and then Mr. Ramon?
Michael Cozen, Code Director, Project Wright, three two zero A Blue Hill Avenue. We would ask that you would have these developers, have this project come back and be more of a frequent visitor and engage with the Intervale Normality Street Association. The association is most impacted by this project. They had some concerns that were not addressed and the project did not get back to them. In particular, we're concerned that there's no drawings presented today on the roof deck. There are no roof decks in the area. This project's in the middle of several large-scale prom properties that have loud and excessive music and large gatherings. And when we presented that, we did not get a satisfactory answer. Also, there's not a clear traffic plan on how they're going to make sure that their patrons do not go down the wrong way on Intervale instead of following the one-way street. So there's issues with the trash disposal, the design of the building being the full scale of the block. We've had other issues with similar designs. And we need those questions addressed and responded back to the Intervale Normality Association.
Tito?
Thank you very much. Tito Jackson, thirty-seven Skyler Street, zero two one two one. I knew Marzouk. He was a good friend. So I'm very happy about this project that really intertwines that brother's life, who was really about the uplift of the Black community in Boston. So having the retail on the bottom floors, as well as high-quality family housing. We see so many small units or micro-units being proposed. And knowing that this one actually has units that are for families in and around our neighborhood and community. In addition, as you can see, the representation that's part of this team is really what I would have loved to seen when I was in office a couple of years ago. And so I'm really, really excited and emphatically would like to support this project. It's something that I really would like to see. And on a day where it's ninety-five degrees, I could use some shade butter at this time. So I want to, I want to formally go on record and strong support. Thank you.
Hello. Good morning, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Latim Jean-Louis. I'm an active member of the community. I live at seventy-eight Leesland Street. I am the citywide cross-country coach and I'm an active member of the community. I'm full support of this project because I know provide permanent housing for local residents and family. Most important, we're supporting a minority startup developer. And growing up with Marzouk and knowing the Muhammad family, I know this ties in to community, ties into the legacy of community building. The Muhammad family has been very active in that community since nineteen seventy-six. So I believe that this is a strong evidence of generational and legacy and will provide new energy to the overall community. Thank you for sharing.
I'm happy you want me to keep going, but I have just about five more reasons. Let's just be, let's just be quick. Yep. Okay, we have Counselor Anderson's office. Let's get into the reasons.
Hello, this is Angie. I'm speaking on behalf of Counselor Anderson. So a counselor would like to support the proposal. Counselor feels that this project confirms, affirms goals of creating a district that's more affordable and successfully fights against displacement. We have received correspondence from some community members, namely Mike Cozu, who did request a deferral. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Lakenya?
Good evening, good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board. My name is Lakenya Rivers. I am the founder and executive director of Family Movement, which is the nonprofit agency that will be supporting this, in full support of this project on the ground level, helping families currently over the past fourteen years of moving from homeless, homelessness to home ownership. So we will be that one, that direct support of the families above the unit, as well as families in the community. We also work with Corey, stories, domestic violence, every barrier that a family has, we, we support it. So we support this project in the community. I did hear a little bit of history of the Marzouk Muhammad family growing up on Interdale Street. Me as a founder of a nonprofit, my family of five also grew up on Brunswick Street. So we are also strong historians of the community and we care about the people. So I am in full support. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's take one more. Okay. Cassie?
Good afternoon. Can folks hear me?
Yes, sir.
My name is Cassip Sabir, born and raised in Boston, long-term resident of semi-Interdale Street. I'm a Boston Public School teacher. I also have a few children of my own. And I just want to be on public record in full support of this project. I know the Muhammad family personally. I knew Marzouk. He was an upstanding brother. And I really love this project for its ability to provide affordable housing and prevent a lot of the displacement that folks from the community are currently facing. It's extremely difficult to find a place to purchase and own in the city. And this project is a way to mitigate some of those effects of displacement. And also with the collaboration of the Family Movement, it's really showing a comprehensive plan to support members as they might experience other challenges besides housing. So I want to go on record as myself, representative of the Sabir family, who's been in the community for a very long time, over forty years, and we really one hundred percent support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from the board? Okay, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion on this project. I think this project is going to be really, really wonderful for the community. The community, I think they need this project. And I'm going to need my colleagues to help me with this motion, but I really want to make a motion to approve this project. If anybody needs to add anything in there, please do.
Alan, you, Alan, you got it all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I second, I second Alan's.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge? Mr. Stembridge?
Yes, Madam Chair. I can add a third if you like, Alan, but
Thank you. Mr. Valencia?
Yes, great project. I'm really happy to see homeownership opportunities coming to a neighborhood, especially since they are affordable. So yes.
Thank you, Ms. Bede Brazza.
I want to say yes. I really appreciate this project from the roots and the beginnings to empowerment and wealth building for the Black community.
Amen.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, a hundred percent.
Thank you. Ms. Weewell?
Yes, I'm happy to support this. I'm happy to hear so many members of the public also support this.
Mr. Eakin?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Congratulations and good luck.
Yes, and Mr. Langham, I just loved the way you made that motion. So thank you so very much and thank you, Members of the Board.
Very uplifting when you end the, end the day, end the hearing. Thanks to all.
Thank you all.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Good day, folks.
Recording stopped.